Okay. It is, yeah. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of November 19th, 2024. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo? Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez? Mayor Potem Gloria Soto?
Here.
Mayor Alice Patino?
Here. First item on the agenda is the public comment period. Do we have any requests to speak?
No, we do not, Madam Mayor.
The City Council will now recess to a closed session. We'll reconvene to the regular portion of the agenda at 5:30. Madam Clerk, can you please read the titles of the closed-session items?
Yes. 3A, Conference with Real Property Negotiators Pursuit to Government Code Section 54956.8. And 3B, Conference with Labor Negotiators Pursuit to California Government Code 54957.6.
Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of November 19th, 2024. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Mayor Potem Soto?
Here.
Mayor Patino?
Here. City Attorney, Mr. Watson, would you like to give the closed-session report?
Yes, ma'am. With respect to Item 3A, instructions were provided to the negotiators. And with respect to Item 3B, instructions were provided to the labor negotiators. No further comment should be made.
Thank you. First item tonight will be the presentation of a retirement resolution. And Mr. Cordero, excuse me, Mr. Cordero wanted to do that this evening, so we arm-wrestled anyone. So, Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a resolution for Chief Schneider. And I have to say before I read this thing that we worked together for several years in different capacities. And without a doubt, as a subordinate, he was the absolute best subordinate that I had that I worked with for all those years as a sergeant. And I worked with a number of young, growing sergeants, and many have gone on to become chiefs of police at different agencies. And Mark was certainly one of the best. And I can say that I don't recall ever receiving a sustainable complaint about him, either from personnel or from the citizens in the community, or his wife, or anybody else. And it was always a pleasure to work with Mark. And he did things differently, in a very positive way. So, Mark, for you, sir. This is Resolution Number 2024-123, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Santa Maria, California commending Police Chief Mark Schneider for his 29 years of exemplary public service. And whereas Chief Mark Schneider has been a valuable member of the city team since 1995. And whereas with 29 years of service in the Santa Maria Police Department, Chief Schneider worked as an officer, sergeant, lieutenant, and in March 2017 was promoted to the division commander. He became acting chief of police on December 19th, 2020, and later was appointed to the city's, as the city's 31st police chief on January 2nd, 2021. And whereas during his tenure as chief, he ensured the police department provide professional police service through community partnerships and delivered exceptional service to promote public safety and reduce crime. And whereas Chief Schneider has, was instrumental in launching the agreement with the county behavioral wellness enabling and clinicians to team up with officers and be proactive in mental health-related calls for service. And launched the online crime reporting, started the cadet program, implementing the body-warm cameras program, initiating the outreach coordinator position, worked to establish the Mexteco Community Academy, and finalized the installation of more than 130 automated license plate readers amongst numerous other accomplishments. And whereas Chief Schneider is proud to have a diverse police department with men and women, many of whom have degrees and are bilingual. And whereas Chief Schneider is, will retire on November 29th, 2024, and the Santa Maria City Council wishes to recognize him for his lasting contribution to the community. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Santa Maria as follows. Police Chief Mark Schneider is hereby recognized and commended for his dedicated service and his significant contribution to the Santa Maria community and wishes him and his family well in their future endeavors. Passed and adopted on this regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Santa Maria, California, held on this 19th day of November, 2024, and signed by all five of us up here. Mark?
I'll give you more than three minutes, Mark. Okay?
All right. I'll be short and sweet. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, for the proclamation. It's been an honor to be a member of the police department for the last 29 years. And I'd like to thank the council for always making public safety a priority and providing us with the appropriate budget to do what we do each and every day. And above and beyond that, I thank you for when you guys take the time out of your busy schedules to attend our badge pinnings and other community events. I know when I see you there, I really appreciate it. And I know the members of the police department recognize that and appreciate you taking the time out of your day to support us in that way. And some nice things said to me about me in the proclamation, but quite honestly, they wouldn't be possible if it wasn't for the men and women and the professional staff within the police department that made all those projects possible. And I'd like to say they were all my ideas, but they weren't. People have come to us with great ideas, and it's just a matter of us just saying, "Let's go for it," and they get it done. So, I'm appreciative of that. And to the folks here from the police department, the professional staff and sworn and some retirees and the community members that came for my proclamation, thank you very much for the support. I appreciate it. And I'm not going anywhere. We live here in town. My wife is here, Kristy. She was actually with me when I got sworn in in 1993. And I have a picture with me taking the oath with her right next to me. And it's nice to have her again, you know, by my side at the end. So, and my parents are here also. Kids are all busy. They can, you know, it's okay. But thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well, I for one would like to thank you, Mark, because you've really stepped in and have done a great job in our police department and so appreciated. And you stay very low-key, so under the radar. Nobody complains about you, sort of like Alex Posada before he was interim city manager. But thank you very much. Thank you, Kristy.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mark, it's been an honor and a pleasure working with you. I think it's just being able to call you at any day, any time has been, you know, starting four years ago when I first got into the council and having this conversation about different topics, different issues that were going on. And just being open to different way of looking into different issues has been, has been great. I still remember the first time we had the community police meeting and you showing up. I was not expecting that. I was expecting for a moment that you would send somebody else in your representation. But you showing up and being with the community, that's just speak volumes of who you are, not just as a police officer, as a chief, but as a person. So, I didn't sign that as my signature submission because I do not agree on you retiring yet. But I know that your wife is excited about that part because, you know, without them, your family support, it's just part of that. That recognition is not just for you, but your whole family. So, thank you for your years of service. And we know that we'll see you, we'll see you around. Thank you.
I would also like to thank Mark. I met him in 2004. I was working for a nonprofit organization, and he was a young detective at the time. And it was really cool to see you move up in the department and make it to chief. And you did such a good job. And we are losing, it's going to leave a big hole in the organization. But I know you have to live your life and move on, and your family will be happy to spend more time with you because it is very time-consuming. You're always on, you're always working 24/7. And even if you're not at work, you're thinking about it. And so, it'll be nice for you to be able to enjoy some time off, but we are going to miss you. And you do leave a big hole to fill. Thank you for your service.
Chief, I want to echo the sentiments of the council members. Thank you so much for your years of service to the city of Santa Maria as an officer, as our, as our police chief. It's been, it's been a great experience working alongside you and seeing where you've taken the police department thus far. And so, again, thank you so much, and I wish you the best on your retirement.
Now, are you regretting after hearing all these accolades? Thank you, Mark. Next item on the agenda is the public comment. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Before we go to public comment, if I can get a motion and a second for the resolution that we're going to adopt for the proclamation?
Okay.
Motion.
Second.
Roll, did you want to roll call or roll call? Okay.
Mark is like, I'm out of here.
Mayor Potem Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Mayor Patino?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
And for public comments, speakers may provide public comments on any matter within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the city council. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, maximum 15 minutes for public comment period. Unless the majority of the council objects, the mayor may provide speakers more or less time to speak. All comments or queries shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any specific member thereof pursuant to government code section 54942A2, the Ralph M. Brown Act. No action or discussion by the city council shall be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda except to briefly provide information, ask for clarification, provide direction to staff, or schedule a matter for a future meeting.
Thank you. And we have three requests to speak. Diane Martinez, followed by Gary Hall, followed by Blake Boardman.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and distinguished city council members. My name is Diane Martinez, and I'm a community outreach specialist for Family Services Agency. First tonight, I would like to thank the council's support of our agency. As you know, we're just down the road. So, tonight I'd like to remind the council just of the services we offer to the city of Santa Maria. Over the last year, we've served over 25,000 people countywide. Our agency's obviously has offices in Carpinteria, Santa Barbara, Lompoc, Guadalupe, and here in Santa Maria. And yet, 45% of our services are right here in the city. So, we've served youth and seniors. And I would like to introduce Marco, who is the manager of the long-term on-budsman program. He's going to take a few minutes to tell you about that.
Thank you. Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Marco Quintana, and I am the program manager for the long-term care on-budsman program in the county of Santa Barbara. We visit long-term care facilities unannounced, and we are advocate for residents in long-term care facilities. Our purpose and our mission is to make sure that the residents are receiving the best quality of care and life. We appreciate your support, city councils, for our program because I believe it is very important for the long-term care residents to know that there is a friendly visitor who is not only the friendly visitor, but the advocate to resolve any concerns that they might have. It is, it can be from the coffee's cold to they are not giving me my medications like on time, or I have problems with my care. We are there to investigate abuse. We are connected with law enforcement, the DA's office, and other agencies, other protective services in the event that we have to share that information with them to protect the residents. We are also mandated by the state of California to witness the advanced care directives in those facilities. Your support is helping for our program, the consistency of our presence. Just like I said before, we do unannounced visits, and that makes that the facility staff will never know when we're going to show up, and they will try to do their best for the residents. Thank you for all your support, and thank you again.
And thank you for being here this evening.
I would just like to close our time with the council and highlight some of our youth services programs as well. We have a partnership with Santa Maria Bonita School District. So, we work with youth to keep them academically and socially engaged in the community. We also have classes for couples and dads, and just we really enjoy serving our city. I think Marco would tell you our oldest client is 106 years old. So, we work with people from the
Go ahead.
birthday to the last day. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Gary Hall? Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, council members, staff, and the citizens of Santa Maria. My name is Gary Hall. I'm a resident of Rancho Pointe Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. Tonight, I want to first acknowledge all of the Santa Maria candidates that participated in the recent election, and thank you for all your participation in our democratic system. I will congratulate winners individually once the vote counting is complete. Let me also remind you that I represent the North Santa Barbara County Manufactured Homeowners Team, or NESBIT. Our NESBIT goal remains to provide protection to all Santa Maria mobile home residents presently living in an unregulated rental market where the current model lease program has been ineffective in protecting homeowner equity and maintaining affordable mobile home housing. The model lease has not adequately addressed the need for mobile home rent stabilization in Santa Maria, and it needs to be improved or replaced. Following the June 6, 2022 motion passed by this council, we have been attempting to do just that. Thanks to Assistant City Manager Wu, we continued the work. The planned series of model lease program, community and resident outreach meetings was completed on November 2. We know the mobile home residents are now better informed regarding the model lease program, but it is too early to determine if the mobile home residents have actually benefited from the outreach effort and the model lease. Now on to the subject of the inappropriate attempt to convert Del Cielo Senior Mobile Home Park to an all-age park. As you know, on November 5, as you may know, on November 5, the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors unanimously passed a 45-day interim urgency ordinance temporarily stopping conversions and instructing staff to work on a longer-term solution. This has occurred as a direct result of the appeals made by the senior mobile home residents from all over the county. Now's the time for the city to take up similar action to protect us, senior mobile home park residents, from similar inappropriate acts by greedy Santa Maria mobile home park owners. I have heard it's been informally discussed in the city. However, I would request that be formally added to the official city agenda and advertised. Finally, my final concern deals with continuing impasse between the city and the firefighters, and I want to once again make an appeal to introduce transparency regarding the contract negotiations which began 12 months ago. How can an impasse which was declared April 12, 2024 not have triggered the act of mediation? And if it did, please explain to me and all the citizens why no suitable compromise has been found. The issue has turned into a political football during the election. The election's over. Let's stop the publicity game.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Let's find compromise before it's too late. Thank you.
That concludes public comment. We will now move on to the consent calendar. Does anyone have any items they wish to pull for discussion? Oh, I did, I'm sorry, Mr. Boardman.
I've been thrown out of bed places.
I put it down in the pile, and I just, yeah. I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem. Thank you. As I say, my name is Blake Boardman, and I'd like to present an opportunity to the council that would possibly entail an amendment to the city code. I'd like to give you a little context, if I may. My wife and I retired, we grew up here. My dad, in fact, was born probably three blocks from here. My mom and dad are here, 90 and 94 years old. My wife and I lived in Flagstaff, and when she retired from running a homeless shelter in Flagstaff, we planned to live in our fifth wheel. And we've tried, we have done that for about four years now and love it. Last March of '23, my mom became very ill and was in Marion Medical for about 59 days. And my wife and I came over here to assist them and help my dad and my mom in their house. We pulled our RV into their driveway, and we're living there. And we were subsequently, after luckily about 17 months, we were cited and fined by the city for living in our RV. It's our home, and we, as I say, we're there to help my parent, we're there to help my parents. When we were, when we got that citation, we looked around, and there aren't many places to put an RV in the city of Santa Maria. The nearest we looked was up in Shell Beach area, and it was about $2,800 a month to park my RV. And I think the council has an opportunity here, knowing the expense of living in California and Santa Maria, to maybe make some changes in that, that city code. A, perhaps a compassionate exemption that would allow us to be there. Or B, an opportunity for the city to regulate that and permit that with some inspections that would offer a source of income for the city and provide a service to the people of Santa Maria. Thank you for your time and consideration, and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Boardman. That is a good consideration for us to deal with. Thank you. Okay. Now we'll move on to the consent calendar. Does anyone have any items they wish to pull for discussion?
Yes. I would like to pull 11D1 regarding the police at the school district and 11E10 regarding the Pocket Park.
E, any others? Okay. I want to pull 11E2. Okay. Any, any others? I know we have a lot of things going on in the consent calendar this time. Okay. Madam Clerk, can you read them?
11D1 and 11E10.
D1.
Okay. Do you want me to read those titles, Madam Mayor?
Please.
Okay. 11D1, under the police department, adoption of a resolution approving amendments to agreements with Santa Maria Joint Unified High School District for Law Enforcement Services. And would you like me to read this 11E10?
Please.
11E10 is adoption of a resolution ordering a bid for East Taylor Street Pocket Park for project bid number 2024-0808.
Okay. Well, let's do the 11D1. Go ahead.
11D1, are we going to get?
The police.
Yeah, but are we going to get a presentation, or do I just ask my questions? How do you want it?
You can just ask your questions. I don't think there's a presentation.
Okay. So, my question is that, so as it, as I see it proposed, the police department is providing an officer or two at Santa Maria High and Pioneer, and they do not want to pay the full cost or the full rate, or billable rate for that. So, my question is whether this is going to cost us money, and is the city going to subsidize police officer services at the school district?
Mr. Wu?
Yes. It might work. Thank you. Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez, so there are two billing rates that are being calculated for law enforcement services. One is the outside billing rate, which covers all the personnel costs and the overhead costs, which the school district came back and so couldn't fully afford. And so, the recommended agreement is based on a grant billing rate, which does cover the personnel costs, but only part of the overhead costs. And so, that's before the council this evening. And we also have Commander Cohen here that can also provide additional information.
Okay. Commander Cohen?
Madam Mayor and member of the council, the Santa Maria Police Department provides two school resource officers to the high schools that you mentioned. We've been under contract with them for many, many years. The rate that has been charged to the school district under the current agreement is $277,000 for two officers for one year. The billing rates have not been adjusted for inflation since 2021. The city recently adjusted those rates to reflect increased costs. The rate went up 80%. The increase was a surprise to the school district. It was mid-budget cycle for them, so they didn't have time to adjust and ask for an increase in their budget. So, their response was that they would very likely discontinue the school resource officer program. The increase of 80% was over a $200,000 increase to them that was unexpected. So, we were using the outside billing rate originally. The proposal is to use the grant billing rate. The grant billing rate is still a 28% increase. It would bring the payment from the school district from $277,000, and it would increase to $354,000, still an increase, not quite to the full level of the 80% increase, which would be $498,000. So, it's still an increase. If the proposal is not adopted, the city would lose between $277,000 and $350,000 of projected revenue. Those school resource officers are part of our budget, and they are in there as revenue offset. So, we would actually lose financial resources.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, it was mentioned that it was, one of the biggest, biggest issue was that it was mid-cycle in their budget. So, are we going back? So are we going back? I mean, we decided to move forward, we decided we're going back and trying to adjust that in the future budget?
Yes, sir. The goal will be to go back to the school district, give them time to readjust, and go to their governing body as well to seek an increase in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. 11E? Yes. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, so this was a proposal to create a pocket park, and my concern is that about two months ago, Angela from Parks and Rec gave us a big book of all the issues we have with the parks and how we cannot afford to maintain them. Given that we don't have the money to maintain the existing parks, why would we want to create another park that we, in five years, won't have the money to maintain?
Thank you, Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez, councilmembers. So, the location is a vandal-ridden area where we are spending thousands of dollars every year to repair vandalism. It is a breezeway that connects Miller Street with Romer Way. We've gone through fencing, we've gone through graffiti abatement. One of the neighbors that we spoke with said that we needed to do something. When former city manager Jason Stillwell was here, it was one of the sites that we proposed as a pocket park. It's really smaller than a residential lot, about 4,800 square feet. Public Works has done a plan that is useful, yet it's not a heavy maintenance burden for us. We want to let the neighborhood know that the city takes a lot of pride in that neighborhood, and that we want them to help us out in, in its upkeep. Right now, it's just a dead-end street with a concrete wall and a cyclone fence, and I think that it would be money well spent to get the project moving, and we could invest those maintenance dollars that we're now spending on abating graffiti and vandalism to maintaining a little park, a little pocket park site there.
Thank you. Excuse me, is that breezeway still going to stay there, though?
The breezeway is there. We will talk with Public Works about conveying the easement. There is an easement there because I believe Utilities has a, either a water or sewer line running in that area. I'm not 100% sure, but there, that's, that's the reason the easement exists, and there's no buildings on it.
What was the idea of having the breezeway there to begin with?
Connectivity, you know? If you look at some of the developments that happened, you know, in the 80s, it was trying to connect neighborhoods.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a very big area, so. Okay, thank you, Mr. Posada. Any other questions? Okay, and 11E2?
No.
No. That was E10. No, E2, yeah. Okay. So I, I wanted, yeah, because I wanted to pull that, and that's the adoption of a resolution approving an award bid for the sports complex project. And I just wanted the public to know, this is the sports complex that we are going to build, the soccer fields, which is Stoll to the north, Battles to the south, Blosser to the west, and Depot to the east. And I think what was interesting in this, the bids came in lower than what we had, because we had saved money. We got money, 1,500 from Santa Barbara County, we got State of California project grant for 1,000, residential development tax, 1,000, Quimby Act subdivision, 1,028, community development block grants at 457, and we got another community block grant of 1 million, and the ARPA funding at 2,145. So, we saved 14,000 for this, and it came in at 9,000, so I just wanted to bring that to the public's attention. Any comments?
Looking forward to have it.
What?
Looking forward to have it built.
I know it. So, so when do we think the ground will be breaking on this?
Soon, soon, yeah.
It all depends on Mother Nature. So, we'll see how much rain we get this winter. We'll probably be ready to go. I, I think, you know, this is awarding now, so three months, three to four months, you know, we'll, we'll kind of see how that goes. If we end up with a lot of rain, that'll be delayed. If we end up with, with less rain and we have a good dry spell, we'll go ahead and start, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fulgoni. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Having heard the motion and a second, any further discussion? Oh, Ms. Soto?
It's about one of the items that was pulled for consent, and just to comment.
Okay.
May I? With the difference between Santa Maria, for item 11D1, the agreement to Santa Maria Joint for Law Enforcement Services, just that, are there grants that we can apply for? Thought question, to make up the difference, but...
Councilmember Soto, Madam Mayor, I think we're always consistently looking for grant opportunities. Every department has a liaison that's out there looking for grants, so I would certainly say for our public safety team, every effort will be made.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Soto?
Aye.
Mayor Patino?
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
Yes, 12A, Adoption of Resolutions and Introduction of an Ordinance for Santa Maria Public Airport District General Plan Use Map Amendment and Zone Change at 1494 Fairway Drive.
And Frank Albro, planner, will be making the presentation?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Frank Albro. I'm principal planner for the city, and this project is a general plan amendment and rezone of a parcel. The parcel size is approximately seven acres, and it is located at the intersection of A and Fairway Drive. The site is owned by the airport district, and most recently, the former use of the site was for a portion of the Sunset Ridge Golf Course. As you can see, industrial development exists to the north and to the east. To the west are road crops, again on city, or excuse me, Santa Maria Airport District property, and to the south is the end of the main runway for the airport. The site is vacant except for an existing city water well facility, which takes up approximately 5% of the site and which will remain through future development. Speaking of development, there are no development proposals for this site at this time. This is only the rezoning and general plan amendment to facilitate future industrial development of the site. Another view of the site, aerial view, looking generally to the west. Around the borders of the site, to the north, west, and south are a portion of the Santa Barbara County flood control channel in the area. You can see the parking lot on the far left side, that is for the FedEx facility, and to the right is the VTC facility. So the proposal would change the land use designation of the general plan from the light industrial, or excuse me, from the current Airport Service District's general plan designation to the light industrial land use designation. Correspondingly, the zoning would change from what is currently open space, which was a remnant of the golf course facility, to the M1 light industrial zoning with the plan development overlay. This matches the designations of the property to the east along Fairway Drive. With this land use amendment and the adjacency of the site to the airport, finding of consistency needed to be made, consistency to the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. That plan looks at both airport noise impacts and also safety impacts for overflights. The project is outside the noise contours identified before the airport, so any future development will not have any restrictions placed on it regarding noise. The site does fall into two of the safety zones. There is some limitation where the maximum intensity of the development should not exceed 150 people per acre, and a lot coverage of no more than 60%. The applicant is aware of these restraints and does not see these as an impediment to future development of the site. Additionally, the Airport Land Use Commission met on September 19th of this year and also found that this land use and zoning amendment was consistent with the airport plan. As I mentioned, there are no development plans at this time, but a certain level of development needed to be assumed, and that was 100,000 square foot of industrial building and site development in order for us to complete the CQ review on the site. A mitigated negative declaration was drafted and circulated to the public with the public review period ending August 9th of this year. We did receive comments, but they were minor, and just technical corrections on air quality, and also some information about potential future oil well discovery, if that were to be discovered on the site. The site, or excuse me, the project was considered by the Planning Commission at their November 6th, 2024 hearing, and the commission did recommend the council take action on the project, including adopt a resolution to adopt a mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring program for the project, adopt a resolution amending the land use policy map from airport service to light industrial, and lastly, introduce for a first reading and continue for a future meeting an ordinance amending the zoning map from open space to plan development, light industrial manufacturing zone. And that concludes city's presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Albro. Are there any questions from the council? Ms. Soto?
I think we've had ongoing convers, thank you for the report. Mrs. Mayor, I know that we've had ongoing conversations with the airport regarding some of our wells out there. How does this play into that?
Councilmember Soto, City Council, this particular well that's located at the, the intersection there is Well 10. It is an existing production well, and it's already connected into the city's well header. Approximately five years ago, maybe four years ago, the airport had come to us. When our wells began to operate, they pumped waste. Essentially, we pump water to make sure we don't pump debris into the line, and they had asked that we change the discharge point from on the property that's currently under the subject of this rezone and continue into the storm drain line on the city's property there on A Street. So we did make that change approximately four years ago to facilitate the development of this property, and we do not anticipate that the request before you this evening will affect the use of the water well in any way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Sorry, follow-up, what about any of the other wells that we have on airport property?
Thank you. I, I would like to say that Mr. Fulgoni has been working with the airport district on that for, I would say, about the last three to six months, pretty vigorously. We've been in discussions with the airport for some time. At this time, there is understanding, and there are agreements coming before both the city and the district regarding the easement. So we have a modification to an existing easement at Well 15, which will facilitate the construction of the city's next water well, as well as adding an easement for a permanent connection for well success into our water system. So, those conversations have been very fruitful, and I'm appreciative of Mr. Fulgoni's work on that.
Great, thank you. I'm pleased to hear that.
Thank you. I'll open up for a public hearing. Are there any requests to speak or written comments?
Good evening, Mayor Patino and members of the council. My name is Pam Ritchie, and I'm the applicant's representative for the item before you tonight.
Is this on the airport?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Does she need to submit a public comment request?
No, she does not.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
So, again, good evening. My name is Pam Ritchie, and I'm a planner with RRM Design Group, and I'm representing the Santa Maria Airport District for the rezoning before you tonight. And the project team has had the opportunity to review the staff report and supports the Planning Commission's recommendation to the city council for approval of the general plan amendment and rezoning. As Frank noted in his staff report, the request to rezone the site from open space to M1 light manufacturing is consistent with the land use pattern in the area, and the potential buildout of the site at 1,000 square feet was made to be conservative and make sure that the potential impacts of future projects were adequately evaluated in the ISMND. So, in addition to myself, the airport manager, Martin Pell, and the airport board chairperson, Nash Marino, are also present tonight. And since there's not a specific project before you, you may not have specific questions, but we're available to answer those if you do. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? None? No questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public, any requests to speak or public comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so I'll close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back to the council. Do I have a motion? Discussion?
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye. And so, I'm going to, I'm going to go from 12B to 12C, and I'll come back to 12B. So, Madam Clerk, can you read 12B?
12C.
12C? 12C, I'm sorry. 12C.
Yes, Adoption of a Resolution Approving a Commercial Building Inspection User Fee.
Okay.
The item in front of you is a public hearing for adoption of a resolution approving a commercial building inspection fee increase. On this slide, you see on the left side the current fee structure. This is for the commercial building inspections provided by the fire department. The current fee structure is a flat fee of 105 per inspection, which equates to about 42.45% cost recovery. The proposal is to increase this fee to 100% recovery, as you have done with majority of the city fees this summer, along with budget adoption. So this would be another fee that was not included with that policy of going to 100% recovery, but we would like to go ahead and make this proposal so that we can fully recover the city's cost for these services. So on the right side, you will see the suggested fee as we are proposing it. It would start at $120 for a commercial property of up to 200 or 2,000 square feet, and then the highest rate would be $420 for any commercial property of 2,000. the highest rate would be $420 for any commercial property of 201,000 square feet. So the action recommendation for today is for you to adopt a resolution approving the addition of a commercial building inspection user fee at 100% cost recovery, as was just presented to you. If you adopt this resolution, we will come back to you once again for a second reading of this, and the fee will go into effect on January 1st.
Thank you, Ms. Bradford. Are any questions from the council?
No.
Do, I'd like to open this up for a public hearing. Are there any requests to speak or written comments?
None, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. So I'll bring this back to the council. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Soto?
Aye.
Mayor Patino?
Aye. Now we'll go on to item 12B. This is another public hearing for the Richards Ranch Annexation Pre-Zoning and General Plan Amendment. This will be presented by Interim Director of Community Development Dana Eadie. Good evening, Ms. Eadie.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. So yes, this is the Richards Ranch project. It's a request involving an annexation, pre-zoning, and a general plan amendment. The project site is located within Santa Barbara County in the unincorporated area of Orchid, within the Orchid Community Plan. It is known as Key Site 26, the Richards property in the Orchid Community Plan. The site is located just to the east of the intersection of Highway 135 and Union Valley Parkway, and it is adjacent to the southern limits of the city of Santa Maria, which are across Highway 135 to the west. The project site is also located within the existing sphere of influence of the city of Santa Maria. The site totals four acre, or sorry, 44 acres, and it's four parcels total. The property is currently vacant. This is an aerial photo of the property. The adjacent uses include residential development to the north, to the east, and to the south. Additionally, the Gloria Day Lutheran Church is also located to the south of the site. There's also residential development to the west across Highway 135 that is within the city of Santa Maria limits. The applications were initially filed in 2021. It includes a request for annexation from the county into the city limits. It's also, it also includes pre-zoning of the property and a general plan amendment. The existing zoning is retail commercial on the entire site, and the proposal includes pre-zoning the site to rezone the northern portion of the property to C2, which is retail commercial, and then the lower area, the southern area of the site, to R3, which would allow for a higher density residential development. The entire site would also have a planned development overlay on it, which would require future planned development permits to develop the site. Similarly, the land use designations that are proposed would align with the zoning. So the northern area of the site would be zoned with a community commercial land use designation, and then the southern area would be a high-density residential with 22, a maximum of 22 dwelling units per acre. The applicant has submitted a conceptual site plan for future development of the site should it be annexed into the city. It includes a mixture of retail commercial and mini storage uses on the northern portion of the property, and then residential development to the south. The project includes approximately 106,000 square feet of retail commercial development. It includes a number of retail stores, restaurants, a gas station and car wash, and then the residential development includes 400 apartment units and 95 townhomes. And the development of the site would only occur after the site were to be annexed, and it would require separate planned development permits and other discretionary entitlements that would be approved by the city at the planning commission or to your council. Services to the site, so water is proposed to be served by Golden State Water Company. The site is within the service area of Golden State Water Company. A supplemental water agreement with the city of Santa Maria would be required for water to be served to the property. In addition, sewer would be served by the Laguna County Sanitation District, and the city has received letters from Golden State Water Company and Laguna County Sanitation District indicating that they can and will serve the site should it be annexed in the future. The fire and police services would be provided by the city of Santa Maria. There is a plan to fully staff Fire Station 6 at the Santa Maria Airport, and that location would assist in serving the site. Also, there is a mutual aid agreement between the city of Santa Maria and the county of Santa Barbara that would remain in place. Schools for any future residents would be through the Orchid Union School District, as well as the Santa Maria Joint Union High School District, and the applicant or developer would be required to pay their share of school fees at the time of development. And then traffic improvements would also occur to Union Valley Parkway, and these would be completed by the developer of the property. It also includes the installation of a new traffic signal at the Union Valley Parkway and Hummel Drive intersection, which does currently experience higher traffic volumes during the peak hours, and so it has been identified that a new signal is needed there. And also widening and frontage improvements along Union Valley Parkway and Orchid Road. So this map is just showing where the project site is in relation to the Golden State Water Company's service area, and it is within their service area currently. And similarly, this is Laguna County Sanitation District's service area, and it is within their area as well. Environmental review for this project was completed with an environmental impact report. The draft environmental impact report was circulated for public review from December of 2022 into March of 2023. There was quite a bit of interest in this project, and so we received over 100 comment letters on the environmental impact report. And so it did take time for the environmental consultant and city to go through all of those comments and adequately address those in the response to comments. And when we reviewed some of the comment letters, specifically from the Fish and Wildlife Service, there was a concern raised regarding the monarch butterfly. There is a stand of eucalyptus trees, it's a little over seven acres in size, that is located on the area that would be developed with residential uses in the future. That eucalyptus stand has had monarch butterflies noted there in the past, and so the Xerces Society has mapped that area of eucalyptus trees as a overwintering habitat area. And so when that was noted, we ended up determining that this was a, considered to be an impact that would occur to that species should it be developed in the future because of the location of the trees and the need to remove them. And so that change was made in the environmental impact report, and the document was recirculated in 2024, this year. And so that occurred, and then the environmental impact report was completed in July of this year. So as I mentioned, there are mitigation measures applied for future development of the site in the areas of air quality and greenhouse gas emissions, cultural resources and energy, geology and soils, and hazards and hazardous materials, et cetera. All of those areas, there were adequate measures to reduce the impacts to less than significant, but there were remaining impacts to biological resources, to the monarch butterfly. And so for that reason, we have included in your materials a statement of overriding considerations that would need to be adopted to certify the environmental impact report. So I just wanted to briefly go over the LAFCO application process. The item this evening includes a recommendation to initiate proceedings to file an application to LAFCO to review the annexation. And so that application is filed by a resolution of your council, and the EIR also is required to be certified by your council prior to the LAFCO application. The city is also required to submit a plan for providing services to the site with the application, and that would be developed if we receive direction tonight to move forward with an application. Also, a negotiated tax exchange agreement process between the city and the county of Santa Barbara for property tax revenues would also be required, and that is a 60 to 90-day process, and it also includes mediation if needed. And an agreement on the property tax revenue is required before LAFCO can formally consider the annexation. And some factors that LAFCO considers in reviewing annexation proposals, it includes conformity with policies on providing for planned, orderly, and efficient patterns of development, consistency with the general plan, which is one of the reasons why we also have the general plan amendment as part of this request tonight. And then impacts to agriculture and open space, that's really not an issue with this particular site, as this is an infill development. The relationship to regional housing goals and policies, and then the environmental impacts. And LAFCO may approve, conditionally approve, or deny the annexation in the future should it get to a hearing with them. So that does conclude my presentations. I have the staff recommendations up on the screen. It includes adopting a resolution to certify the environmental impact report, and that includes the findings and the statement of overriding considerations. It also, the second item is to adopt a resolution to amend the general plan, as I discussed in the presentation, to introduce an ordinance pre-zoning the site to retail commercial and high-density residential, and adopt a resolution approving an application to initiate proceedings for the Richards Ranch reorganization or annexation. And so thank you. That concludes my presentation. I did want to mention that the applicant is here. If you have any questions, I think they would like to make a brief presentation. And also, Babette Bedolf with SWICA Environmental Consultants is here if you have any questions specifically about the environmental review. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eadie. Any questions? Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The tax exchange agreement, Dana, who does that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Cordero. So that is set up between the county and the city, and it's after the application is submitted into LAFCO. So that would occur at that time and would be organized between the two parties.
Okay, so the, who does it isn't decided yet, then, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions? Okay, I noticed in all the recommendations, nothing was here about the tax exchange agreement. So that's, it's not even there yet.
Correct.
Okay. But that does have to happen before they go to LAFCO. Okay, got it. Did you?
I do have questions.
Oh, question.
Why isn't this going through the county? Why are they asking for the city to annex?
Thank you, Mayor Patino and Councilmember Soto. So this site is required to, well, the water is served to the site by Golden State Water Company. And so the applicant is required to purchase supplemental water because, as a result of the groundwater adjudication that occurred. And so at this time, the city has determined that the best way to move forward to be able to provide the water is to annex the site to be able to provide that service. There has been a history on the property that I think the applicant is going to go into regarding the prior ownership of the site, but the main reason that the annexation is being requested is to provide water to the property.
Can you discuss a little further about the groundwater adjudication?
Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Patino, Councilmember Hernandez, do you have specific questions about it or just the?
Just the process, because I think not everyone understands what that means, and I think, you know, to be transparent.
Yeah, absolutely. I see Director Springer is getting up. I think he can assist me with that.
Mr. Springer.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hernandez. So, yeah, there are a number of guiding documents that dictate what happens with the groundwater basin in the Santa Maria Valley, going back to the Orchid Community Plan that Ms. Eadie is familiar with, and there were some mitigation factors, commonly known as WOT 01 and WOT 02, which were mitigation factors. Those got incorporated into the groundwater litigation, and as part of the adjudication and stipulation, those similar statements were included in the requirements, specifically that as new urban uses are developed in the area, they must provide a source of supplemental water. The Cliff Notes version is the water supplier in the area, Golden State Water, had fully committed its water right in the basin, so it did not have water right available for new urban uses. The city of Santa Maria and the city council determined that it had water right in excess of its needs and authorized the lease of the city's water right up to 900 acre feet for development in the Orchid area. So in order for a project to, well, a project in the Orchid area could get supplemental water from any other source. The most convenient source over the years has been from the city of Santa Maria. Essentially, the lease of the city's water right, which would then allow Golden State to utilize that water right to pump the groundwater and provide it to the customer as they would any other customer. It is the most convenient and expedient because it does not require the import of water from other areas or other coordination efforts.
Thank you.
So even if we don't annex, or if the annexation doesn't go through, and this gets billed as still county land, we would still have to be, we would still be mandated to provide them water?
The city is not mandated to provide water.
Okay.
Yeah.
But what about?
Is the state mandated to provide the water for residential use?
No.
No.
I'm confused. You're gonna have to dumb it down for me.
So the obligation to provide the source of supplemental water is upon the developer, the property owner.
Okay.
It is not the obligation of the city to provide supplemental water within the basin.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll, any other questions, Ms. Eadie? Okay, then we'll hear from the applicant. So we have Lori Tamarra and Michael Stolti. So how do you want to do this? Okay, Mr. Stolti.
I'm Michael Stolti, managing partner of Richards Ranch. Our development team is comprised almost entirely of local Our development team is comprised almost entirely of local architects, engineers, and planners. Tonight, I'm presenting Richards Ranch, a transformative mixed-use project on Santa Maria's border. This 44-acre infill property has a compelling history. Zoned commercial since the 1980s in the county of Santa Barbara. It attracted Walmart's interest in 2003. Despite their 18-year effort to develop a supercenter, water access challenges led to their departure in 2021. Today, we're transforming this strategically located parcel into a vibrant mixed-use community. The water story is crucial to understanding our proposal. In the 1990s, Santa Maria, the forward-thinking decision, Santa Maria made the forward-thinking decision to join the state water project, while Orchid's water provider, Golden State Water Company, faced limitations after community opposition to state water allocation. Since the water adjudication, Santa Maria has shared its water resources to Orchid for housing development, enabling landowners to build homes and for the county to have its rent allocations. Despite extensive efforts, including over 12 meetings with county officials and staff, it became clear that securing water access and appropriate zoning within the county was not feasible. Despite extensive efforts, including over 12 meetings with county officials and staff, sorry, I just said that, annexation into Santa Maria emerged as the practical solution to bring this much-needed housing development to fruition, a solution that would benefit the community, the city of Santa Maria, and the county of Santa Barbara. Richards Ranch seeks to feature a specialty grocery store with local restaurants, a hybrid gas and EV charging station, a childcare facility, veterinary services, modern apartments with community amenities, for sale townhomes designated or designed to complement Orchid's character, and extensive green spaces and gathering areas. Through over a dozen public meetings, we've actively incorporated community feedback. A large component of those meetings were in Orchid, and I personally door-knocked with just about every neighbor within the region. Replacing some of the feedback and changes that we made to our project based on all these community meetings is that we replaced quite a few of the apartments with townhomes. We lowered the building heights. We improved circulation. We restricted the southern access point to the property for emergency vehicles only, which addressed some of the neighbors' concerns regarding the apartments or the townhome users parking and creating traffic in their neighborhood. All of these community meetings allowed us to enhance the design to better suit the community. The annexation brings significant benefits, not only for the city, but also for the county. We had an independent, third-party consulting group review the financial analysis of what a tax exchange typically would look like for this type of development. And they estimate that the county would in fact receive over $1 million per year in net annual budget increase. The city of Santa Maria, despite encumbered with the services, would receive over $2.2 million in annual revenue, which would net out to be about $1.35 million. So there's effectively $1 million in annual revenue for the county, and about $1.3 million in annual revenue for the city. Most importantly, the school districts would, are estimated to receive around $1.7 million in annual revenue for local schools. And of that $1.7 million, Orchid Schools are estimated to receive about $815,000 in annual revenue. The development fees beyond the tax increases are around $20 million that would go into public parks and much of the city's infrastructure. One of the most interesting things about this site is because of its infill nature, it's one of the best sites for housing development. It has Union Valley Parkway, which is, will be four lanes, which we will finish out the four lanes for our area. And it has Highway 135 on one side. It's hard to imagine a housing site that can handle much-needed housing, that can better address that, and have little impacts to the community. In addition to that, the commercial will actually, because there's so little commercial in the area, the commercial actually helps reduce traffic overall in the Orchid area. There's so many, so many folks that drive up into Santa Maria for their services, that providing these much-needed services actually helps reduce traffic and greenhouse gases. This annexation aligns with LAFCO principles, even if water was not a concern at all. LAFCO states in its guiding principles that if a site is contiguous with the city's border, is imminent for development, and is urban in nature, that it wants LAFCO to proactively see sites annexed prior to development. And this largely has to do with the efficiency that cities have, providing all municipal services. We remain committed to ongoing dialogue with our neighbors and community stakeholders throughout this process, and that includes moving forward. Community members can stay informed and reach out directly through our website. After 1,000 days of collaboration with the city, a 2.5-year process of secret review that went through two different rounds, of which our EIR is now 2,500 pages, and 27 years of dormancy on this site, of which it has not been supplied for water, despite being zoned and commercial in the county. We've developed a vision for a vibrant community that will benefit both Orchid and Santa Maria for generations. We respectfully request our approval of annexation, general plan amendment, and rezone to bring this vision to life. I'm available for questions, but first, I'd hand over to Lori Tamura for historical context.
Good evening, Lori Tamura with Urban Planning Concepts, working with Michael on this project. We reviewed the comment letters that came in and had a couple of comments in regards to those. One of them was in regards to why this project was not being processed through the general plan update process. We had initially in 2021 asked the city staff to be included in that process, but after several conversations with Chung and Dana, it was determined that this infill project would better be processed as an individual application with its own individual EIR. They determined this based on the, many of the LAFCO policies, as Michael noted, it is already in the sphere of influence of the city of Santa Maria. It is already zoned commercial, both in the city and the county. It has not, it does not impact agricultural lands. It has completed roads and infrastructure that was not the case with properties that would be considered in the general plan update. Therefore, the city staff thought it should operate as its own application and go through its own separate process. There was, the staff has explained some of the history about the Orchid Community Plan and WAT-02, and I'm available for any questions if there's some additional information you'd like in regards to that. Several comments in the letter also indicated very strong support for the project as proposed by the applicant, and many of them particularly appreciated the commercial component of the project. It is important to note that the county had the opportunity to rezon this site for residential through the housing rezon process. And it was determined that this would be, the effort by the supervisors was to deny this residential rezoning, as it wanted to have additional conversations with the applicant. After four months of negotiations on a development agreement, the county, the critical point in the negotiations was talking with the county planning department and the planning director. That director made it clear that this project would have to start over, and it would be a new EIR, a new application process, and it would probably take up to four years. And that is quote from that planning director. Another signal of working with the process is that it was time-consuming, and it's no guarantee that that request would be approved. We had no choice but to continue with the process with the city. Finally, since this project was submitted with the city in 2021, Michael and his team has worked diligently to make sure that this project meets state law, planning and zoning law, housing law, California Environmental Quality Act, regional water quality control requirements, the airport land use plan that was recently adopted, both county and Orchid land use policies as analyzed in the EIR, as well as the city's policies and ordinances. The city planning commission reviewed this project and forwarded a recommendation of approval with a four-to-one vote. Staff's here tonight to provide a full record of the project and is recommending approval of the project. We're here asking for approval of the project and to move this request forward to LAFCO. We are available to answer any questions, and we do wish to have time to answer any questions upon completion of the public record.
Any questions? Oh. Matt Aguilera Hernandez?
Where are you with the process in having continuous conversations with the county?
At this point, we are not in communication with the county. We've moved, we've moved into this process with the city.
Right. But this process with the city requires us to have conversations with the county.
That's the request.
So what is the plan?
The real issue here is that the litigation, the adjudication of the groundwater basin, the longstanding, over 25-year policies, both with the county of Santa Barbara, WAT-02, and the ordinances and provisions that were adopted by the city council 25 years ago, are all the standing rules of the game at this time. Any reopening up those standing regulations should be a regional discussion, not tied to one independent project. And so at this point, after over four years of when we first started the dialogue with the county, county supervisor, there has been no resolution to this, no vetting, nothing publicly vetted for discussion, either at the city council, or at the board of supervisors, or even to take back to the courts to open up the litigation of the adjudication of the groundwater basin. So at this point, we're following the county provisions, we're following the city's provisions, and we're asking to move forward, just as was done with Key Site 25 over on Santa Maria Way with the Coles and Lowe's proposal 15 years ago, and that piece of property was annexed to the city of Santa Maria because of the same policies. So we're asking that we be treated the same as other projects that have come before this city council in the past.
So am I understanding correctly, with the water adjudication, 20 years ago, this came before the county, and the county said, no, we don't want additional water because we don't want to grow? Is that?
What happened, and I'm going to dial back a little, when state water came into the region, everybody had made a commitment to state water back in the '70s, early '80s. By the time state water came to this area, the Orchid community had an allocation of 3,000 acre feet. Because at that time, CalCities, now Golden State, is a private company, they had to go through the PUC approval of rate increases to be able to pay for that state water allocation. It's a private company, they were not going to take it out of their own pocket. The community rose up in opposition to that rate increase. And there were many, many meetings, not only within the community during the, I'm going to say, late '90s, early 2000s. And ultimately, the rate payers commission of the PUC voted not to raise the rates for the Orchid area. Ending up, Golden State sold their allocation to Galita. They retained 550 acre feet so they could have a connection to the state water pipeline, which is out on Black Road, heading south to Lake Kachuma. And Rice Ranch purchased 350 acre feet, Mesa Verde Vintage Ranch, couple of the other residential projects of the early 2000s had that allocation. But after that, there was no more water that Golden State, you know, CalCities could allocate, and that's when WAT-02 came into place. And it says supplemental water needs to be allocated or obtained before residential or other projects could be approved. And the relationship has been that developers come to the city of Santa Maria and buy their allocation of state water through the city of Santa Maria. As the ordinance that Mr. Springer mentioned, the city council at that time allocated an amount of 900 acre feet that could be used as residential projects came forward. And I believe we're at like 650 acre feet now that have been allocated to Orchid projects. But the one provision was that they would not give water to major commercial projects in Orchid. They had to be annexed to the city of Santa Maria. And that's why we're here today.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Mur, or Mr. Stolti? Oh, Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lori, do you have a history account of, of the time when Walmart owned the property? And what the negotiation was there and the disposition? I know, but I think it's good for the public to know.
I was not involved with that project, so I only know of what was in the newspapers at that time, so I'm not versed in speaking to it, other than the fact that Walmart tried to go in a number of different places in the city of Santa Maria, including Betaravia. They were going to do a superstore up there, and they thought that they've landed on the right property at Union Valley Parkway on this site. They didn't realize that it was outside the city of Santa Maria. And when they started, when they started the negotiations, they hit the same problem that we're talking about today.
Right. That's my point, is that the issue has not substantially changed in all these years, and the posture has remained the same with the existing property owners and the, and the city anyways.
Correct.
That's my point. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Mur? Okay.
Again, I really look forward to hearing what the public has to say and coming back up.
Okay, I'll open up the public hearing. I have Glenn Morris, followed by Cliff Solomon, followed by Todd Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor Patino, members of the city council. Thank you for the opportunity this evening. My name is Glenn Morris. Address is 1123 Sutter here in Santa Maria, Council District Four. It is an honor to be back with you again. I've spent the last 10 years advocating for housing and commercial development in our community. And this project, while it has opened up some challenging relationships with our neighbors, ultimately seems like a very straightforward opportunity for the city of Santa Maria. Cities and communities establish processes to guide their growth and development. City of Santa Maria has done that. When an applicant follows those processes, investing time and financial resources, they need to be able to count on a predictable outcome. And as Mr. Murra mentioned, this community's gone through this process with other projects along our southern border between Santa Maria and Orchid in the past. And in each case, the solution has been to annex those commercial projects. This applicant, over the last four years, has met the requirements put in front of them. I would argue they've gone above and beyond, investing more than three years and over $1 million, making sure that the project meets not just the minimum standards, but really the desires of the community for that area. Your staff has provided detailed analysis. The planning commission, which is charged with reviewing those analyses and making a recommendation to you, has done their job. In both cases, the recommendation to the council is to approve this project. The city and the county clearly have issues they need to continue to discuss, but I don't think it is appropriate that those discussions be financed in time. think it is appropriate that those discussions be financed in time or in treasure by a single applicant and a single project. In this case, the project has met your requirements, has completed your process, and I believe they have earned a yes vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Cliff Solomon, followed by Todd Wilson, followed by Susanna Brown.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Cliff Solomon, and I live about a half mile southwest of the Richards Ranch project. I am speaking to you, asking that you not move forward with the annexation of the land from unincorporated Santa Barbara County to Santa Maria. We need to keep Key Site 26 in the county, where those of us who are directly impacted by this project have a say in how it develops. We believe that the county is better equipped to address the unique needs and concerns of our community, especially when it comes to issues like infrastructure, traffic management, and environmental protections. I understand the need for growth and the desire to see more housing options, especially affordable housing. However, I am deeply concerned that the annexation of Richards Ranch to Santa Maria will result in development that prioritizes growth over sustainability. We are already struggling with traffic congestion and insufficient infrastructure, and I worry that these issues will only worsen if this project moves forward under the jurisdiction of Santa Maria. As a community, we need a development that reflects the values and needs of the people who live here. We need more than just promises. We need transparency, accountability, and a commitment to long-term solutions that will ensure the health and well-being of our residents, the environment, and the local economy. We need developers who are invested in the future of orchid, not just in making a profit. I urge you to consider the long-term impacts of this annexation and to keep Key Site 26 under the oversight of Santa Barbara County. Let's work together to ensure that this development serves the needs of the community, rather than the interests of outside developers who may not have our best interest at heart. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Todd Wilson, followed by Susanna Brown.
Mayor Patino and council members, my name is Todd Wilson, and I live in Orchid, approximately one mile just south on Fox and Wood of the subject property. I'm recommending that we not continue the proceedings. I also recommend all the necessary approvals to move this project on to LAFCO. I have reviewed the EIR, I've reviewed all the comment letters, the neighbors of the orchid area, and it's my, in my review, it's my opinion that the project is a good balance of residential and commercial development, and basically that area is just starved for commercial development. The developers played by the rules, the planning department has provided integrity to the process. I think what you have before you is reliable information. My experience of the general man development applications in the orchid plan area, Santa Barbara County, tell me the orchid plan administrators won't be able to bring a better plan to the orchid area residents. A lot of the, I recommend that you not oversimplify this project proposal. There's a lot, there is a lot of complexity, but at the same time, the applicant has done their work, your planning department has done their work, and so I recommend to you the approvals, and I will be recommending the annexation. I think it's an excellent plan, and don't miss the opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you. Susanna Brown, followed by Joseph Pavavrov, followed by Cam Boyd.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and honorable council members. My name is Susanna Brown, and I am a Central Coast resident and a data scientist, as well as a dedicated housing advocate. I am here tonight to express my strong support for annexing the Richards Ranch project into the City of Santa Maria. Housing affordability on the Central Coast has reached a critical point. The median home price in Santa Maria is approximately $665,000, reflecting a 10% increase in just one year. Meanwhile, rental costs of a three-bedroom home average between $29.50 and $3,000 per month, with a rental vacancy rate at 2.6%. These figures paint a clear picture: housing options are limited, and affordability is slipping further out of reach for too many families, essential workers, and young professionals. Richards Ranch offers a meaningful opportunity to address these challenges, and this project will help reduce the housing gap and provide much-needed homes for our growing community by incorporating a diverse mix of housing options into this design. Notably, the project also prioritizes sustainable infrastructure, thoughtful planning, and the inclusion of community amenities that will enhance the quality of life for residents here. This project is about more than housing. It's about strengthening our local economy and ensuring a sustainable future for Santa Maria. The annexation of Richards Ranch will increase local property tax revenue to fund city services, schools, and infrastructure. It will generate jobs during construction and beyond, benefiting multiple industries. This will bring new customers to local businesses and stimulate economic growth. As a data scientist, I've seen firsthand the benefits of housing developments like Richards Ranch across the Central Coast. The evidence is clear: when cities take proactive steps to expand housing options, they see immediate and long-term gains in economic vitality, as well as community well-being. Failure to act only exasperates this crisis, pushing families further away and limiting opportunities for our region. Santa Maria has been a leader in addressing regional housing needs, and this annexation is a critical step forward. I urge you to approve the annexation of Richards Ranch to help create a more vibrant, inclusive, and sustainable future for our beautiful community. Thank you for your time, leadership, and thoughtful consideration.
Thank you. Joseph, and I'm going to murder your name, Pavavrov? Did I get close?
Welcome, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Yes, my name is Joe Pavavrov. I stand before you today not just as a community advocate, yet as an honorably discharged veteran, a father with children, and someone who has family in both Santa Maria and Orchid. My commitment to this region runs deep, and I'm here to voice my support for the Richards Ranch development, a project that has potential to address pressing needs and shape a brighter future for us all. For too long, the 44-acre parcel known as Key Site 26 has sat vacant, a symbol of missed opportunities for housing and economic growth. The Richards Ranch development represents a transformation vision combined with businesses that will create jobs and provide essential services for our families. We are in the midst of a housing crisis. Families and workers are struggling to find affordable, quality homes. This project is a lifeline, offering relief by creating a range of housing options to meet the needs for our growing community. Beyond housing, the proposed businesses will stimulate our local economy and bring valuable services to our neighborhoods. Despite the clear benefits, this project faces unnecessary delays. Over the past three years, developers have invested over a million dollars and have cleared significant hurdles to reach this point. Yet there are calls to pause and restart negotiations and move that could take years and jeopardize the project altogether. Furthermore, there are also the issue of water. For decades, water availability has been the roadblock to developing this land. Yet Richards Ranch has addressed these challenges with visible solutions. It's now time for the city and county to work together in a forward-thinking collaborative way. Together, we can ensure that Santa Maria and Orchid grow in ways that provide homes, jobs, and services for families today and for generations to come. Thank you again.
Thank you. Cam Boyd, followed by Juan Pablo Cali Mayor.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Cam Boyd, and I am a homeowner in the town of Orchid. Full disclosure, I also work in the building industry, although I have no affiliation with this project whatsoever. I'm here strictly in my capacity as a homeowner, a husband, and a father. As a homeowner, it's quite clear to me that we have an acute housing shortage in the area here. I know that's quite clear to you as well. Housing, acute housing shortages have lots of, come with lots of community maladies, things from, ranging from homelessness at the extreme to housing instability at the less extreme. I personally grew up in a household that had housing instability. I attended five different elementary schools. I intend not to have my son live through that same issue, and it's clear to me that something needs to be done, and this project contributes a lot to reducing the acute housing shortage that we're facing now. So I strongly encourage you to support it, support the annexation. Thank you.
Thank you. Juan Pablo?
Good night, council members. My name is Juan Pablo Cali Mayor. I'm CEO of a small business, and I'm a millennial, and, well, I'm not a homeowner. My generation loves to complain about housing prices and affordability, so I'm here to voice my support for a project like this that can put a step forward in trying to solve the housing crisis here in the Central Coast. Santa Maria, the city of Santa Maria, has demonstrated forward-thinking leadership in addressing the region's housing crisis and challenges, and I think this project will be a step forward, and if it gets rejected, it would definitely be a step in the wrong direction. Solving the housing crisis is a silver bullet to solve the staffing challenges that many small businesses like myself, and really any kind of business, big business, nonprofits, healthcare, government, we all face the same staffing problems, and staffing problems ultimately are a human problem of people cannot have a roof under, on top of them. I think that the project itself has a great merit. I mean, it's a no-brainer from the tax revenue for the city, county, and from an environmental and urban planning view, projects rarely get much better than this. So I hope you take into account this, and hopefully gets, the project gets built. Thank you.
Thank you. Max Zappas?
Thank you for being here tonight, everybody, and thank you, mayor and city council, for participating this evening and representing our community. My name is Max Zappas. I'm a third-generation home builder and developer on the Central Coast. I too have no relation to this project, although I do know the developer. My grandfather and father brought their businesses and investors to this area around 1990, the year I was born. My father retired about two years ago after our most recent condo project in Atascadero. He retired largely due to the timely approval process during the entitlement, much like the one Richards Ranch is going through now. The California Building Code, SEQA, regional water quality control, and the myriad of other agencies make home building near impossible. There's still a lot of review on this project, they have a long road to go, they still have the whole LAFCO process, so I would just encourage the city council to not delay this project any further, to approve it and move it forward as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. So for the applicant, or Mr. Murra, are there any rebuttals that you would like to comment on or make any comments?
Thank you very much. Again, Lori Tamura, working on the project. We are very appreciative of those that came here and spoke in favor of moving this project forward. We understand there is a request for a delay, and we do not believe that that request should be honored here tonight in that this effort, the discussion in regards to water has been long-going and yet to be resolved with one particular project. We're here tonight hoping to move this project forward to LAFCO for the benefit of both orchid and the Santa Maria Valley. So thank you very much, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of the council? Any comments?
Questions to...
Oh, go ahead, questions?
No, I was asking questions to the staff or to Lori.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have questions?
Yeah, any question?
I do have a question about the opposition, or the request for delay. Can you clarify what the request for delay was?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Angela Hernandez, the request for 90 days came from the County of Santa Barbara, so that they request that time so that the city and the county can engage in broader discussions, and so that's their reason for the 90-day request and delay.
Okay. So couldn't we have broader discussions without having a delay?
Certainly.
And would those be able to happen within the next 20 to 30 days?
20, 30, you know, I think that, yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions? Okay, you want any comments?
I have a question.
On Mr.? Go ahead.
Thank you. I heard, I heard the applicant throw out $1.3 million as city sales tax revenue, or sales tax revenue that would be coming into the city, something along those lines. What would be, what would be the cost associated to annexing that property? If it were, and if it were to be developed, like what would be, do we have an estimate of the ongoing annual cost to the city?
Councilmember Soto, can you clarify what you mean by cost?
Like, how much do we, how much would it cost to have trash-collecting services? Water sewer services, parks and recreation, like there are, there are city services that are costly, and I'm just curious if we've done the math, or have an estimate of what that cost would be?
Mr. Soto, did you want to respond to that? Mr. Stolby?
I would be happy to respond.
Sure.
So we, unfortunately, I don't have the name in front of me, but we hired a third-party consulting company to review all of this, and that's generally part of the LAFCO process. So for full transparency, we actually had the effect of this project for the entire County of Santa Barbara's budget, as well as the City of Santa Maria, even though technically we're requesting annexation in the City of Santa Maria. That company broke down all aspects of the city's budget and the county's budget, and then reviewed and estimated the tax revenue associated with this property, as well as all of the different fees and support systems that would be associated with it. And that actually impacts the county slightly, because there are certain services that the county renders regardless of it being in the city. And then there are certain services, and the majority of services are rendered by the city. Off the top of my head, and this study has been provided to the city, so it's public record, and I'm happy to send it to whoever needs it, but ultimately, the city's estimated tax gain in gross revenue is around $2.2 million. So when we say 1.35, for lack of doing some quick math in my head, it's effectively the difference. So, you know, the difference between 2.2 million and 1.35 million, I think that's around 900 and something thousand, that incorporates the estimated entire burden, you might say, of this project for the city. And so that includes road infrastructure, police, fire support, all the way through to library support and things like that. And in the county's case, when we say 1 million, the actual revenue generation from the tax is higher than that, and then, you know, they have public, public health and things like that that are supplied to this region. And so when we say a million dollars net revenue, it's less those encumbrances that the county would have from this project. And so ultimately, the city stands to generate around 1.35 million in final take-home revenue, and the county would stand to receive about a million.
Every year?
Every year, yeah. And that, what that doesn't include, obviously, is what we talked... And that, what that doesn't include, obviously, is what we talked about with schools at being about 1.7 million per year, of which Orket schools would be about 815,000 of that. And what's also not included in that, and what's part of the tax exchange agreement, is that it's estimated that county fire, even though they technically wouldn't be encumbered by this project, would, would receive around 290,000 in annual budgetary increase as well. I also have follow-up documents that actually explain, some questions have come up if the residential happens before the commercial and things like that. That's difficult for a developer to handle on a project of this scale to bring it all forward at exactly the same time. Those markets can be different. What's interesting is in those financial documents, the residential itself can completely support all of the encumbrances for the city, meaning up until the commercial, which we don't anticipate that the commercial would happen in a different time, but the residential itself can encumber all of the support systems for this project for the county and the city from a tax standpoint.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
You plan to build 400 apartments, 95 townhomes. How many people do you anticipate will live there?
Oh, gosh, it's in the environmental impact report. I'm hesitant to say, because it would be 1,200? 1,200? 1,200 to 1,400. We actually have a significantly more designed project. The apartments have come down to 384 as of our last design, and the townhomes are right around 100.
Any other questions? Any comments now? We'll go to the comments. Oh, you have questions? Okay, Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and this is for staff. So I saw the air pollution control district letter, and I was wondering how this letter could impact the certification of the environmental report, and whether additional environmental analysis or findings must be made later, or how does, how would that work?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Escobedo, so we reviewed that letter, and I have Bobette Bittloff from the environmental consulting firm that managed the EIR on their side of things with us to assist. But essentially, the county air pollution control district does have some concerns about the methodology that was used regarding some of the trip rates, because this is a mixed, this is considered a mixed-use project, because there's connections between the residential to the south and then the commercial to the north. The, and I'll let Bobette go into the details on this, but essentially, there are a couple of different ways to look, to do this analysis, and we looked at it as a mixed-use project, and that's where they had some concerns. So I'll let Ms. Bittloff continue.
Yes, thank you, council members. You know, we took a look at the air pollution control district's most recent letter, so just this Friday it was received. And the comments are very general in nature, stating that they still have concerns about the methodology used. I want to go back to, you know, our, we actually did an analysis in the draft EIR, and then the air pollution control district and us met after them receiving that analysis and making some very specific comments on that analysis. So at that meeting in 2023, we did take their input and, in fact, conducted a supplemental analysis that was much more conservative. And that more conservative analysis was included in the final EIR. One of the things that I'm not sure is coming through in the air pollution control district's general observations is that we, in fact, in our supplemental analysis, in this more conservative approach, really considered, we added trips essentially to account for internal trips to the project, which, in fact, increased the amount of emissions in the air quality and greenhouse gas modeling. And with that addition, the findings are similar. I mean, there's additional emissions, but the findings are similar in that the issues can still be mitigated. So the air pollution control district's letter is very general in nature. It's a little hard to know specifically what issues they have with the supplemental analysis, because they're not identified in the letter. But what is encouraging is that they go on to say in their letter that they would like these, to continue to have conversation and for the additional, for it to have a relook, if you will, when the planned development permits are processed. And we think that's a very appropriate approach. We look forward to looking, to working with the air pollution control district and making, making sure that, that the calculations are, you know, reflective of the approach that they're looking for. But I feel very confident in our technical work and the whole series of mitigation measures that are being required or that would be required as identified in the final environmental impact report. The letter's a little misleading, because it says we concluded that it would be less than significant, when in fact, the EIR actually concludes that there is a requirement for mitigation measures, and only with those mitigation measures would the impacts be less than significant. So there, in fact, are, I think, about a dozen or 12 to 14 different, very specific mitigation measures related to air quality and greenhouse gas emissions to ensure that emissions are reduced to the extent, frankly, that they can be for a development. And, and those emissions are, in fact, also reduced because of this mixed-use element to the projects, which would, you know, reduce folks from traveling far distances for groceries, for example, because the, the project itself has that, those, you know, neighborhood-serving commercial uses within the project. So I don't know if there's any specific questions, but hopefully that, you know, provided some perspective that we have on, on how the analysis was conducted.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, before we continue with the discussion, and we need to close public hearing for the public comment portion, I'd like to read those that have submitted written comments.
Okay.
And those are from Home Builders Association of the Central Coast, County of Santa Barbara, Brownstein, Air Pollution Control District, Santa Barbara County, Susan Bryant, Steve Leverd, Dignity Health, Marion Regional Medical Center.
Okay, then I will then close the public hearing, bring it back to the council.
I have a question about a written document that was submitted.
Yeah.
So Steve Lebard submitted the grant deed by which you, the Richard Grants, acquired this property, specific in their Walmart placed following conditions and restrictions. And they stated that you are not allowed to have a grocery store, supermarket store, pharmacy, general stores. How are you going to build a grocery store if it's not permitted under the grant deed?
Thank you for asking this question. So when we engaged with Walmart to purchase the site, it was about a six-month negotiation. There were actually considerably more items that they were not going to allow for, to be developed in the future. And so there was a back and forth that took place. And one of the things that was very important to me, I don't know if it's understood or not, but I lived in Orket up until a couple of years ago. And when we purchased this site, I was in fact living in Orket, in Old Town Orket. So I know the area very well, and I was, I've been personally impacted by their only big one grocer and a limited number of gas stations and things like that. And so when we were negotiating the site, I made it, it was very important to me that we tried to, try to resolve some of those commercial encumbrances. One of the big ones that we had was that we would be able to do electrical charging and gas. But the, but the big tug and pull in that negotiation was regarding grocers. It's important to me that we do a grocer. And what it came down to was that ultimately, as a previous owner of the site, there are concerns about competition. And so the request became, well, can we put in a grocer that isn't directly competitive with the Walmart that currently exists in Santa Maria? And back and forth we went, and ultimately, where we landed was, they believe it's reasonable to put a specialty grocer in this area. They feel like it's not directly competitive with them. And so then it came down to attorneys on how do we try to do that? Ultimately, Walmart's attorneys were not comfortable trying to put specific names of grocers that would be allowed, because depending on how long this process takes, those grocers could be totally different. And so ultimately, it was communicated to us that when we come forward with a specialty grocer, assuming that that grocer is not directly competitive with Walmart, such as a bargain grocer, like a dollar store, or a grocery outlet, or something like that, that they would review it, and as long as it didn't compete with them, it would be something that they'd be interested in allowing us to add to the community to help with the grocer situation. To further kind of prove this point, you know, people generally don't do a lot of work and spend a lot of money on something they don't believe in. You know, for the last four years, we have been discussing and negotiating with grocers. We have spent extensive amount of funds doing architecture designs with those grocers. Whether or not we'll be allowed to add it to the council to review, I've actually brought a letter from a local grocer, from California Fresh, from the CEO of California Fresh, who in his letter confirms that he has been working with us for the last three years on architecture, and that they're very excited to potentially enter the site, as well as a letter from our brokers, who were part of the Walmart discussions and have actually negotiated with Walmart on, on CCNR restrictions in the past. And they have also confirmed that this is their understanding and that they're, they believe, and that they've been working on this for years, and they believe that it will be something we can resolve.
Can we see that?
Yes.
Any other questions from the council? Mr. Cordero?
I just comment, Madam Mayor, when it's time for you to, is that now? You want to do that?
Well, if there, are there no other questions from the council?
I do have a question.
Oh, you have questions? Okay.
This might be for Dana or Chang. When a vote could be expected from LAFCO? That's a, yeah, it's a, it would be reasonable to think that it might take some months, years, 20, 26, order?
Okay. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Escobedo, it really just depends on the length of time for the negotiations to occur between the city and the county, because the, the property tax, tax exchange agreement negotiations need to be completed. And then there would be a resolution, I believe, that would come back to your council and related to that. And then the next step would be to continue moving forward with LAFCO to, to a hearing. So, you know, it could take anywhere from three months up to a longer time, just depending on how long it takes to complete all of that.
Yes, Councilmember Escobedo, and it's hard to know what LAFCO's own processing times are, so LAFCO staff will take the time to review the application. And, and so I would expect that they have their own timeframe, which I would expect to be at least several months.
And, you know, by reading the letters from the applicant and also the counties, you know, the legal concerns outlined by the applicants seems to be more hypothetical. They were talking, you know, it's not deliberations. They were talking about making a group and making deliberations, the decisions that can be made, but it's rather discussion, basically discussion, and any deliberation would be here in open session with the, with the council. And I just, I just want to make sure that, this might be a question for, actually for Tom, if that would be a correct assessment.
That would be a correct assessment. Again, the, the board has asked for a joint committee, which would not be appropriate under the Brown Act. It is more appropriate for staff to have discussions, bring recommendations to both of our respective clients, and move the process forward. Again, all you have in front of you tonight is whether or not to move this application to LAFCO. You don't have a project, so, while, while interesting, it's, it's a, it's a potential project, but right now it's a rezone and, and moving the, the processing to LAFCO. So that's, that's what we have, and it, once it goes to LAFCO, if that's the determination of council, then there are additional processes, including the negotiation of tax sharing agreement and other processes that LAFCO conditions the project on. But again, there's no actual project. There is just a rezone and a movement to see whether or not this parcel comes in to be annexed by the city.
Right, but aren't you asking us to adopt a resolution to certify the EIR, adopt a resolution approving the amendment to the general plan, introduce an ordinance pre-zoning the 44 acres, and adopting a resolution to approve the application?
It's the application, the application to annex, not the application for a project. The project would come later. The pre-zone, obviously, would be here.
Right, but you're still asking us to make all these three decisions, and I don't see anywhere, so the revenue that we were given, the 2.2 in annual revenue or net 1.35 is based on the grocery store sales, I'm assuming, and I don't see any document from Walmart that says they're even allowed to build a grocery store.
Again, we don't have an actual project in front of you. So while the applicant has hypothetical numbers based on hypothetical commercial development, all of that would have to come back before the city council and the planning commission once a development is, project is appropriately brought forward. So, while, while those are interesting numbers, I would not rely on those numbers, because as of right now, there's not a project in front of you. There's not a development in front of you. What there is, is there's a request to annex this parcel into the city with pre-zoning, and then there would be a project that would be in place on that, and then you wouldn't talk about numbers at that point.
Well, no, the EIR is based on the trips, as mentioned, to a grocery store.
On, on a potential project based on the pre-zoning that you're, that is being put on it.
Right, and you're asking us to certify the EIR.
The staff is asking you to certify the EIR.
Correct.
And that's based on a hypothetical commercial development. It may be different by the time the project comes forward.
Correct. So I guess the issue I'm having is, this is a huge housing project, and as Councilmember Soto pointed out, it is a burden the city is taking on whenever we take on housing. In my opinion, the city of Santa Maria has better roads, better shopping. You know, I drive to Orket, the roads aren't that great, the shopping is limited, the resources, and so we would be taking on, if, if LAFCO approves it, I'm not saying they will, you know, police, fire, library, shopping. And Orket, you know, has to fight, Bob Nelson, who's their, you know, county supervisor, has to fight for all those services that they get all the time. And so it's difficult for me to certify an EIR that does, that is a hypothetical as well. So I'm trying to, you know, understand the legal ramifications of us certifying an EIR that is based on hypotheticals.
Can we move forward with the recommendation to apply for annexation? Can we move forward with the recommendation to apply for annexation without the EIR? Can you elaborate more on that?
I can, yes. Um, so the application to Lafco requires a certified or adopted environmental document. The EIR for the project had to look at basically a worst-case scenario. When you, when you do environmental review under CEQA, you want to consider a worst-case scenario project, so you can fully, uh, analyze the project and all the environmental impacts surrounding it. So, um, sometimes you'll see an environmental document like, that, that doesn't actually have a project proposed, it's just analyzing the zoning changes. In this case, uh, we asked the applicant if he had a conceptual plan for future development of the site so that it could be analyzed. But it is possible that a future development might come in with, with less than what's proposed. The only thing that it cannot do is come in with more development than what is proposed because then the environmental document wouldn't cover that. So, um, that's why it's important that the request includes certifying the EIR because, as I mentioned originally, the application to Lafco does require a certified document to be submitted with that, with the rest of the materials in, in the application.
I think it's important that the city does continue to have conversations with the county, so I think that should be something that we should add on to, you know, uh, the four things that you're asking the city council to do. I think the fifth one should be to have a meeting with the county, um, who wants this project. I mean, it is a housing project, it is a burden on the county if they take it or if the city takes it, because of all the services you have to provide to residents who live in the area. So I think, you know, in my opinion, we should continue to have those discussions if we choose to move forward.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I, I don't know what the, uh, holdup is on the EIR. If we approve the EIR as it is, and the applicant falls short for whatever reason, if that shortfall is significant, then the ratification is insignificant. Um, you, you can't, you can't really expect the city to ratify an EIR that they, when they come back and say, well, you know, it was 1 through 10, and now we've got 1 through 15, uh, that's not going to, I mean, that's, it's going to die. So I, I think we're, we would like to have it completed, uh, or closer to completed, but when we're dealing with something that has, um, uh, imperfections in it, until, until we get to those final statements, I, I think that we're, uh, we're, we're going to run into that no matter where we are. So I, I don't want to say we shouldn't worry about the EIR. I think we should, but I, I don't think the not doing the EIR is, or excuse me, not ratifying the project, if in fact that's what this council decides to do, uh, should be based on the fact that the EIR does not fit perfectly into the, uh, into the, into the program that we perceive it to fit in. That's just my opinion. I'm, you're, you're a land attorney and, and certainly know more than I do about it, and, and maybe you have something else you can say, but, uh, I can't imagine an EIR for every project that is just perfect. It's just, that probably doesn't, especially one this size for us. This is a pretty good size, uh, EIR, um, project. Uh, and my other comments, Madam Mayor, I think I should, uh, report out that, uh, I spoke with, um, both, uh, Bob Nelson and, uh, Steve Lavignino and some of their staff, and they spoke passionately about, uh, about the project and, and wanting it to remain in, in the county of Santa Barbara. And I spoke with, uh, the, uh, developers of the Richards Ranch, uh, regarding their intentions, so I just want that to be known before I make the following comments. I've talked to several people, uh, on this project, and I've yet to find a person that says, well, this is a crummy project. This is no good. Uh, it's, it's, it's been, it's been described to me, even by, um, Steve and, and Bob, that this is a great project, uh, and by several of the, um, people in, in, in the Orchid area and in, and in the San Maria area. I think that Suzanne Brown, was she over there? She, she, she spoke very eloquently about the project and its pros and cons. Uh, this applicant has been waiting for years, and I think we should, uh, move ahead with it. In fact, I'll go so far as to say that if, if someone chooses not to vote for this project, it's, it may be a, a dereliction of our responsibility, our fiduciary responsibilities. Uh, we all have the same wishes, meaning when I say all of us, I mean, uh, the county board of supervisors and the city council have the same wishes to have a successful project. We just want it in our particular jurisdiction. Uh, and I want to comment also that the, the, I, I tried to illustrate this a little earlier with, with some testimony. Our posture with regard to this project has not changed since it was under the direction of Walmart. It was the, basically the same as it is today, and, uh, so that, that's not news. It's, it's, uh, it is the same. Uh, and I, I fully understand the, the desire of, uh, Supervisor Lavignino and Supervisor, uh, Bob, uh, that they, they want it there, but they, they've been trying to develop it for decades, and it hasn't been done. And we can do that and start the, the development in, in a short space of time if it is approved by Lafco. Now, my understanding of Lafco, and you have to, you have to do difficult research for it, this particular project was kind of sort of made for the Lafco decision. The Lafco is, uh, is responsible for doing what they do in, in land and deciding, well, do we really want to develop this, you know, annex this property? And, and they bring it to the, to the various cities wherever they're, wherever they're given a consideration. This project is designed for that, and we definitely have a housing crisis. This is not going to solve it, not by any stretch of the imagination is it going to solve it, but it'll be a move in the right direction, and I say that for a bunch of reasons. I know that, uh, Councilman Escobedo has more than, uh, more than once indicated that his, his, uh, constituents would like to have ownership, and this provides ownership, and it provides it at a lower, lower rate. So I think that we should, uh, if there's more questions that we, we can have the applicant or other people in the, in the audience answer, we should get them out and get them answered, and then move forward. I would be in favor of hearing anything else that has to be heard, but I think we should move forward with the, with the, uh, with the vote and get this thing going.
You know, I'm, I'm going to make some comments because I think we're, we're asking and we're trying to analyze things that this is not in our purview. What we're asked to do is our planning commission passed this four to one, one person had to abstain, and so then the next part of the process, it comes to the city council. We can say yes or no if this is going to go to Lafco. Lafco is going to do a very in-depth analysis of everything that you're asking here. These are things we cannot sort out here among us. We, we do not have the expertise. Um, we certainly, our, our planning department certainly has the expertise and has asked us to, um, adopt the EIR. But when you go to Lafco, they will have criteria. Is this, is this contiguous to the city? Is it a logical extension to the city? Are the services, um, and utilities, um, that are going to be provided, are, are, are they going to be effective and efficient? What about the police? What about the fire? The library, the parks? And so they're going to go in-depth analysis on all of this, and this is going to take time for them to do. Um, and this is where they're going to find out, is it effective and is it efficient in order to get this done? And so the whole process, and we're only part of that process, and, and I personally don't think that you stop a process, um, on any project if you're going to be fair to the applicant. I think it's a matter of fairness. This is, um, a person, a property owner, he has the legal right to do with his property and within the framework and the constraints of our government. Now, for some reason, this project was taken out of the housing element in Orchid, and it should not have been done that. I don't know why or any much of the background, but that puts him, that puts the applicant further behind. I think that knowing a lot about the whole process of the water and what went, what went down at Orchid, and we got, this council chamber was packed, the hallway was packed, when the city of San Maria decided to buy state water because there were those that opposed it. And I think, my gosh, if we hadn't bought state water, where would we be today? We've got to figure out for 30,000 people in the next 15 years, and we do have the water to do this. People are coming here and moving here. We have got families living in a house, you know, two, three, four families living in a house. That is not healthy for any community. And so we're talking also about housing here. We spent, we, we, we started delivery of our water in 1997 in the city of Sanria, and we spend right now 26 and a half million a year on that water. And every three or four years, we check on the water rates, and they always have to be raised. People complain about the water rates, but the city of Santa Maria and the councilmembers then had the foresight to buy that water. Orchid bought some water, but the, there was a group there that did not want Orchid to grow, and here we are, 50 years, how many, how many years later, and people out there want to grow. They want to have, and they can't because of decisions that were made from people years ago. They wanted to keep it a very rural type of atmosphere, which is great. People can live the way they want to, but here we are, and now, you know, we have the water. It's like we're the bad guys. We're not the bad guys, not at all. And, and so, like I said, here we are. And so whether this project is in Santa Maria or in Orchid, when people drive down the road, they're not going to know the difference where it is. The people in Orchid, and I understand because I've worked closely with them, have, you know, the feeling of community, and they want that retained, but we're not the bad guys. We didn't do that. We didn't paint ourselves into a corner on this. And I, I think that we need to respect, um, a person wants to go through the process, and we are only one little piece of that process they're going to have to go through. Like I said, Lafco's going to be doing the big analysis on all this to see if it works. Lafco's going to say yes or no on it, and, and I think that's where it needs to go. And anyway, Mr. Escobedo?
Madam Mayor, uh, I would like to just, uh, there was, uh, they require 60-day negotiations that, that were included in this, seems to be a little bit different on what would happen with, with the county. Basically, since we would vote, I mean, if we decided to vote and, and move this, um, get them in motion, that would limit the scope of conversation, like water, because now we will need to, that will, we will need to provide water to this side in case it is annexed. So, um, would that, you know, having that discussion, let's say, basically, water, yeah, wouldn't be part of that discussion, would that assessment be correct from you guys' perspective?
So, uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Escobedo, is, is your question regarding the, the tax exchange negotiation timeframe?
Sixty days, yeah.
That doesn't actually start until the application to Lafco is submitted. So the request, or the recommendation this evening is for your council to just initiate the proceedings, for staff to prepare the application to Lafco. So there could be time for some discussions with the county.
I'm sorry to interrupt, so by we saying yesterday, no more water conversations, basically, with that, because, you know, it's, uh, it's in the process of being annexed, so there's not going to be a need for, uh, any, any discussions? Is that, is that accurate?
The, the discussions may lean more towards, um, the tax exchange agreements and the Lafco-related items, and I don't know if, um, Mr. Wu or Mr. Watson want to add any more to that, but, um, that's really, would be the next step is with the Lafco discussions.
Thank you.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A question for Mr. Wu probably, or, or anybody else in the room who feels they can answer it. I would like a very brief breakdown of the tax allocation of funds to the city and to the county, based on the two different, uh, methodologies of developing this project. And by that, I mean, if it's developed in the city, what is the anticipated, uh, tax breakdown? And if it's developed in the county, what is the significant tax breakdown? And I think that you might be surprised at what the answer will be. So up to you, assign it, do it, I don't care.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cordero, it's, that's a hard one to, to answer. Um, you know, Mrs. Stolti did mention earlier that there's an economic impact study that was prepared, so that can be used as a reference for, you know, given that it, it is prepared by third-party consultant. Um, you know, if, if a property were to remain in the county, it's, it's in the county, but again, right, right now it's vacant, and so it's, it's hard to, to say what the anticipated revenues would be dependent on what's built. Uh, you know, if it's, if it's in the city, again, it's, there's, there's something to be negotiated and agreed upon, and it's just a premature to, to say at this point.
So they could go through the process, and Lafco could deny the project, correct? So we're not going to continue to have, this is why I'm saying if, nobody's saying this is a bad project. This is a good project, whether a grocery store is built or not. I think there's issues with putting in a grocery store in the project when it's not allowed, and we don't have anything in writing from Walmart. Besides that, though, the applicant's spending a lot of time, money, effort into getting this approved. Let's say it goes to Lafco and they don't approve it. Shouldn't we be having conversations with the county, with APCD, so that we have a contingency plan for them in the event that happens? That's where I'm saying the fifth item should really be for us to have continuous discussions about that. If, if we are serious about, you know, creating more housing, especially townhomes that are affordable for the millennials.
Is there anything to prevent that? There's nothing to prevent, uh, additional dialogue, is there?
Well, what are we, what are we going to talk about? I mean, they've been talking for four years, so now what are we going to talk about over there? Are we, the water?
In the event Lafco turns it down?
Okay.
And we are serious about building this project, how will we help build the project if, you know, the city is committed to building townhomes and 400 apartments, right? Because if Lafco turns it down, it's not in the city limits anymore.
Well, then at that point, it'd be the county because the same, the same could be said. I've had conversations with Orchid residents who are in opposition and in favor of this project. I've spoken to the developer, and I've heard comments from county board of supervisors and our staff. And what I keep hearing is that everybody is in favor of the project because they like it, they just don't want the city to annex it. So the same could be said. If it doesn't go through Lafco, the county could still say, this is a good project, we want to move forward with it.
But they can't because they don't have the water.
Well, then that's when we can have a conversation. Well, then, that's when we can have a conversation, and they can call us, we can, I'm sure we'd be willing to meet with them. I think.
Let me, let me, let me insert something here.
I'm assuming the conversations could be continued irregardless of what happens here tonight.
Okay. We had conversations with the county, and, Mr. Wu, you can correct me, about four years ago, on this suspended Table A water, and there was water there in the county of Santa Barbara. I can't remember who found the water. Anyway, there was water there, and the city of Santa Maria wanted to buy that water. And one of the contingencies on that is that we would not sell that water out of the county of Santa Barbara unless we have the approval of the Board of Supervisors. And I thought, okay, that, that's fine, because I, I can't remember how many acre feet this, so I'm going back on my memory, how many acre feet that was. But then they kept throwing in all these toxic pills on it, so pretty soon, it was like, they owned the water almost, but we were paying for it. And so, and then it got so expensive and so expensive. Guadalupe wanted to go in on that, Solvang wanted to go in on, San Onofre wanted some acre feet of water. We, we wanted the most. And how much time did we spend? A year, a year and a half? And they, we only could get two votes, and one was Lavenino and Carvajal, and.
Two votes for what? I'm sorry.
For, for the water.
For the water.
To buy this, and it's still sitting there. It's still there.
So, nobody owns the water?
This water, this Table A water is still sitting there. This would not have been a, this would not have been a problem today if they had, if they had just let us buy, we were going to buy it. They wanted to control everything on it. So, when you say you want to sit down and talk to them, lots of luck, but I'll tell you what, well, we have done it. We've done it.
Right.
We, we bought the water, you know, I represent the city of Santa Maria. We bought that water, the citizens paid for it, they paid for the delivery, and they're continuing to pay, like I said, 26 and a half million this year. And so, I feel like the people in Santa Maria are going to say, hey, what are you going to do, selling water to different places? We were told we had to sell water to the POMO, so that was done deal. The judge told us we had to do that. But anyway, I've said enough.
I, I, I have, I have a, a couple of concerns.
A question. Sorry to interrupt. Are we in questions?
I haven't finished my thought.
Not just question.
I haven't finished my thought.
No, just, are we in questions, or?
No, we're, we're discussing.
Oh, discussing, okay.
Discussing. Go ahead.
I, I do have a couple of concerns regarding the EIR and the impacts, including the overriding consideration that is being asked of the council to make. I'm concerned of the precedent that that could set for future development projects. I love butterflies, monarchs, and, and not just what would happen to, to that species, but also air quality control, all of the things that were mentioned. I also do worry about long-term financial implications for the city of Santa Maria if we were to move forward with annexation, cost versus revenue. I will say, too, that this is a really good project, and it is an infill project, and I think, I, I've never been in a situation where I am literally stuck. I, I, a part of me wants to move forward with the project, a part of me wants to hold off because of just what we've heard tonight about EIR and also cost associated. I also know that we need housing, and ultimately, the project that, the, the consideration that's being asked of the council is around processes, not so much about whether or not a project will be, what kind of project will be developed. And I understand what was also mentioned about EIR being worst-case scenario, in, in a sense. And so, I am stuck on this one. I do believe that we need to have continued conversations with County Board of Supervisors. I, I also understand the frustration that, that has been looming, and that has been growing amongst both the county and, and the city and, and the developer around moving forward with the project or, or not. And so, I don't know what to say, but I'm stuck.
Mr. Cordero.
Well, Madam Mayor, addressing Councilwoman Mirabelle's issue with regard to if Lafco turns it down, I, I don't believe it's incumbent upon Santa Maria to go after the solution. I think it's incumbent upon the county saying, hey, well, what, what, can we do this, or can we do that? It's whether they even want to.
Agreed.
And there are other options that, that they have chosen not to exercise.
What are those options?
I'll, I'll give it to you in a nutshell. There's a place called Cades? Cades, where's she at? Cades?
Cades?
Cades is a.
Cades, a city?
Cades, it's, it's, it is a name after a city, but there's a place over in the valley, in the desert, and they have one heck of a stash of water that they've discovered underground. They are currently working to bring that water to Sullivan. I only know that because of my involvement with water. So, and, and I don't know that, that the current supervisors have done anything with regard to trying to solve that water issue with Cades or, or a like facility. So, I don't have an answer for Mirabelle's question, but I know that if, if the, if the county is serious about that, they will come to us. We, we don't have to call them up and say, hey, why don't you come and check with us? They're smart people, particularly Bob. Bob is very motivated to, to, to work on this project. And I, I, I think that we're, we're pounding the drums for somebody else's responsibilities. We're here today to decide whether or not we want to send it to Lafco. I have said before, I believe that it should go to Lafco, and then we deal with the results of that. If they come back and say, well, what about this, then we can, we can deal with that at that time, but.
Mr. Wu, is there an off-ramp here? Is there a point of no return?
Mayor, members of the council.
Because people, people are, I guess, you know, I get this, they're nervous that we're, we're going to be putting, investing, and we're not going to get the investment back. And so, is, is there a point there where, I don't know?
You know, I'll, I'll share that the applicant has come to the city because the applicant believes that the city would provide the most efficient process. And we've taken that application and reviewed it, and the EIR has taken a long time, but it's before, it, it went before the planning commission, and they recommended to the city council, and, and we have it before you today because the applicant's very interested in getting this project built. And so, that's really the reason why we're here tonight. It's of a request for annexation, and if the, if the council authorizes, we will prepare an application for Lafco.
But if we're to go through at Lafco, we still have multiple bridges to cross, is what I'm hearing.
You know what? We're going to have to annex someplace sometime real quick, because we've got a lot of people moving in, and we're going to have to, we, this was not in our general plan, you know, going south. This is just now coming to us, because we saw the necessity to go east. Well, not, not you, but some of us did, but we've got.
I remember.
We've got 30,000, 40,000 people. Where are you going to put them? We've, we.
I don't know.
The high school district, it's, I, I gave out 50 acres the other day, and the superintendent says, no, it's probably closer to 60 acres for one high school. We had a man telling us from the elementary school board, eight, probably for that amount, we need eight elementary schools. That's 15 acres apiece. We have to go someplace.
Right, and that's.
So, that's just, you know, part of it. We're going to have to make those decisions on where we need to go, and it's not can we, can we afford it? We've got too many people living in one house. We've got families, several families, living in one house. We have to build someplace. We know that.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you. And that, and you touched on a really important topic, that it's, there's more coming up, and I think that the annexation of Richard Ranch is, it's one symptom of a larger in the Santa Maria Valley, that it's the city and the county, we don't agree on everything. We discuss issues, we explore solutions that, you know, I think that we should explore ways to find some common ground on something that can benefit both of us, county and the residents of Santa Maria. And I think that the reason we're here today is a reason of one newspaper headline called this showdown between the city and the county, and that's because we have not had, have meaningful relation. We've been, I mean, for example, and it was brought up briefly, while I prefer infill growth, the majority of the council voted in favor of annexating ES of the 101 in the future, and the county has some underdeveloped key sites in Orchid. So, that to say that we both have major projects going on, and, and that will require collaboration. And we're currently working on many social issues, which the county has provided funding for, even some, there are primarily city issues. And our council has discussed policy about water in Orchid in 20, 2004, sorry, and that was 20 years ago. And a lot has changed. We have, we have 30,000 or maybe more, fewer residents than what we have right now, and in the world of development, annexation and Lafco, 90 days is not, is not a big deal. I think it's a, it's not, it's not a long time. Will anything change if we decided to move forward and wait these 90 days? I don't know. And, but I do not know that having this poor relationship, working relationship between the city and the county for years will be developed. I mean, there's more coming up, and we own to the residents that, you know, there's, we need to get, to take care of those difficult conversations, and, and I want to make clear just that my position is, as I mentioned, just to make it clear, I vote for delaying the vote for those 90 days. I do not vote against the annexation or the development. It's just, my point is, we need to develop good relationship with the county, we need to collaborate, because there's much more that unites us than divides us. So, and that, if, if it's appropriate right now, I believe we're in conference now, I will make it a motion.
Mr. Escobedo, I meet on SB-KAG and APCD with the county monthly, and we have a great relationship with the county. We really do. We were right ahead of many counties when we got together and did our broadband, and just other things, our, our roads, 101, and where we're going to put our money in our Measure A, we work very well. But when they wouldn't even entertain the thought of us buying that water that is so needed today, and now is so expensive, and all we needed was three votes to do that. And this, this conversation's been going on about the water for four years now. It's not like it's brand new. So, we either respect an applicant going through the process to go to Lafco, and that's all he's asking of us, not whether or not we approve it, not whether or not we get along with the supervisors. This man wants to take his pro, the, his project through Lafco. Lafco will make that decision about who, what is most beneficial and what's most efficient for them. And Lafco is composed of people from the north to the south part of the county. It's not just Santa Maria or the north part of the county. And they look at this, and they're going to do a big analysis on everything. You know, here we are picking apart little things without even analysis, it's just our feelings, and, and I just don't think that we hold up an applicant to do a project. It's his money. It's not your money. It's not my money. It's his money that he's spending, and that's a lot of money to spend on a development. I'll tell you something else, on being on the housing task force for the state, if, if he doesn't get the project built, the state can come in, and they can build anything they want, any place they want. And we have suffered in the city of Santa Maria with things that the state has done because of, just the parking, just the parking alone, nothing else but just the parking. The state does not make as good decisions as our local people do. So, I just think it's a big mistake not to, to allow this man to go to Lafco, and that's all he's asking. He's not asking if we like the project or don't like the project or anything else, he's just asking to go to Lafco and have it studied, and then we will be the recipients of that analysis.
And, and, and because of that, I think that's a, you know, how are we getting there? It's important. Are we getting there by shutting down that opportunity of 90 days? It's a, I don't know how that, you know.
Mr. Escobedo.
It's 90 days.
If they haven't made it in four years, do you think they're going to make it in 90 days?
And that's, and that's, and that's, and that's my point as well. You know, they're asking 90 days, and in a project that has been, that, you know, the process with Lafco is going to take longer. So, I think it's a, just, a good faith action would be to.
Let me ask you this, Mr. Wu. If, if they start through the process of Lafco, can they drop it at any time? Could we concurrently speak with the county, because there's some members that want to speak with the county, and still go through the Lafco process?
Yes, he said that already.
This is, this will be an application that's submitted by the city, and, and Lafco would be, they would take the application, review and process the application.
Right, so, so the question is.
Can it be pulled at any time?
Yes.
I, I think we, yes, we could pull it.
Okay.
So, can't we do a hybrid? Can't we let them move forward with Lafco? I don't know what Lafco's going to do. They're going to study the EIR, they're going to look at the deed that says they can't have a grocery store, all of those things. But we should also commit to have, and the county has reached out in response to Councilmember Cordero's, that the county has talked to us, they're reaching out via this letter and asking to have a conversation within the next 90 days.
Which letter do you have?
It's the one that's in public record, November 5th.
But why now? Why are they asking us now?
Therein lies some of the problem that, that the mayor's alluding to.
Correct, so.
It's been, it's been four years since they've been talking about this project. Now, there's nothing that I know of that prevents the county from calling up and saying, hey, we want to meet on Tuesday for this. I, I don't, I don't care what we have going, there's nothing that prevents them from doing that. So, can they do it? Yeah.
I think they have, and that's why I'm saying, can't we do a hybrid? Let the applicant go to Lafco, but have the, the county's reaching out, asking for that conversation, whether it's now or within the 90 days. I think we should commit to have that conversation within the next 30 days, let the applicant go to Lafco, let Lafco do the process that they do, and that's a committee of people, they're going to study the project.
Okay, is that, is that a motion?
We had that conversation. We had that. We completed that meeting.
But, but by, by doing, by voting on this one, basically, the conversation would be, you know, what's, what's the point of it then, because it was already in the process?
What's the point of what?
Of having the conversation, if we're going to already say, we already say yes to this project.
But you can pull it. We can pull it from.
We can pull it.
That's what I'm saying, it can be stopped at any time, but let's do, we can do it on, on a parallel.
Madam Mayor, I think Carlos made a motion earlier.
Yeah, I, I was going to mention that a motion is up there.
Well.
Can you repeat it?
Yeah. Move that we delayed this item for the 90 days and have this conversation with the county.
Ms. Aguilera, would you like to make your motion?
First, is, is there a second?
No.
Okay, if there's no second, then it dies.
Yeah.
Just want to make that clear for the record.
Okay. Ms. Aguilera, would you like to?
So, I would like to make a motion that we allow the applicant to go to Lafco, that would complete the four items that were. would complete the four items that were requested to do today, and that within the next 25 days, we have that conversation with the county regarding the water. Because as Mark Twain said, whiskey is for drinking, water is for fighting, and we need to stop fighting. That's my motion.
Why 25 days?
Did you second?
Why the 25 days?
We can make it 30 days, I just think, they're asking for 90 days. I think the applicant, if our goal is to create more housing, whether it's in Arquette and Santa Maria, like the mayor said, when you drive past that line, we don't say, I'm in Arquette, I'm in Santa Maria now. Only I know that. But, you know, if it, if the housing, building more housing, affordable housing is really our goal, and LAFCO turns it down, then we need to talk to the county, because now it's their project. We're not annexed, it's on them, they need to start finding the water. So, that's, my motion is that we do a hybrid of both.
There's a motion?
Just clarification about the motion.
Let me, I may not have...
Just say, yeah, 29 days.
29 days, okay.
You, you said, you said that?
I said 25 days.
25 days.
Okay, there's a motion?
Does anybody...
What? I, I will second that motion.
Okay, okay.
Madam Mayor, may I clarify the motion, just so it's clear on the record?
Clarify the motion.
So, the motion is to approve the four recommendations as provided by staff, and that the, that you're asking the city manager or his designee to have a discussion with his or her counterpart at the county regarding an ongoing water issue for annexations. Is that...
Correct, yes.
Within, within a reasonable time period, not to exceed 25 days.
Correct.
Would it have to come back to council?
Well, the, the annexation application will move forward. Any report back from the, the fruits or no, no fruits of such a meeting would be reported back in, in the city manager notes.
Okay.
And if, if may, if I may, I would be in, in favor of the motion, if we can find some middle ground, make it 60, you know, 60 days, and they will not get the 90 days, but let's make it 60.
So, 60 days for the purpose of having such a meeting outside the scope of this project?
Well, I'm saying earlier than that.
She wants it earlier.
Up to, up to 60.
He's, he's asking for an amendment.
So, what I'm saying is, we're required to have the meeting with the county in 30 days, not 60 days. So, we would have it sooner than your request.
Okay.
And then, I said, what, I said, in order to have these conversations, you're saying that before the 20...
Well, I think the LAFCO application process, it's gonna take about 30 days for us to even prepare it?
Yeah.
How long does it take, Dana?
Councilmember Aguilera Hernandez, it could take a few months to put it all together, because there's quite a bit of information that has to be packaged up for that.
Correct, okay.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
I didn't get the second motion, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. It's okay. Can someone repeat the motion, and who motioned it, who seconded it?
So, again, the motion as, without amendment, because amendment was not adopted, is to approve the four recommend, staff recommended items, and add a additional element outside the scope of this project, which is for the city manager and/or his designee to have a discussion with the county counterparts related to water and annexations within 25 days.
Correct.
I, I don't recall anything in the motion about the city manager, but if you want to add it.
Oh, you don't need to, there's too many amendments.
See, that's the appropriate person to have those discussions, that's why I added it. Just to clarify.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Aguilera Hernandez?
Aye.
Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
No.
Mayor Portemceto?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Motion passes.
Thank you all for being here.
Good luck with that. Michael, I just threw him under the bus, because he's still...
Huh?
I threw him under the bus, because he's still intro.
Do we keep the copies? Here you go. Oh, those are just copies. Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Now, on to our regular business item for the first quarter amendments and finance report for the first quarter ending September 30th, 2024, presented by interim finance director, Xenia Bradford.
Thank you, counsel.
You can wait a couple minutes if you want to, till the room clears out.
Oh, I'm so thirsty. So, the item in front of you is the first financial report for the current fiscal year that covers just the three first months of the year. The council action for tonight, first is to just receive and file the report, and then the second recommendation is for council to adopt a resolution approving recommended by staff budget amendments to the current 24-25 budget. So, we'll briefly look at the economic outlook, there is really not a whole lot of big news here. We are sort of on the same trajectory that we have been on. The economy grew at 2.8% compared to 3% in the second quarter, so we are in the same sort of range of growth to where economy continues to expand, but not at a really rapid rate. The US unemployment has dropped to 4.1% compared to 4.2% reported last quarter, so once again, very similar results. And the inflation has been subsiding in accordance with the federal actions, and is now at 2.4% down from peak of 9.1% in 2022. So, we'll take a look at General Fund and Measure U. As I mentioned, this report only covers the first quarter of the current fiscal year, so we only have three months worth of data here. And we also have some timing variances, especially when it comes to the revenue, most notably the property tax on when those come in. So, we are, there's no surprises, we are still in the same pattern as we have been expecting. The revenues as of today as a percentage receipts are at 16%, and our expenditures for the general fund are at 17.8%. So, we'll continue to monitor those trends as we go through the fiscal year, as we have mentioned to you before, with the second quarter financial report, we will have more data on our, both revenues and expenditures, and we'll also be bringing forward some additional recommendations for the budget balancing exercise with that report in February. So, just to show you a brief comparison on revenues and expenditures for the current first quarter compared to the last year's first quarter. So, the last year's first quarter for 23-24 ending September 30, what is shown in blue, and the current fiscal year results are shown in green. So, as you will see, that operating revenues to date compared to a year ago for that quarter are a little bit lower. Last year, we had 14.5% in revenues, and this year, we have totaled 14.3. I would note that the trend there is that TOT is doing a little bit better, and we are also seeing more activity in community development, again, than was originally budgeted for. So, those are positive contributors to the revenues, but the sales tax is the one that's driving that figure down. On expenses, you will see that our expenditures to date for the first quarter are almost $1 million more than the city had spent in the last quarter. The city has implemented a hiring chill, which requires, it's not a hiring freeze, but it does require additional review by the city manager for any vacancies to be filled. So, we are seeing a little bit of a slowdown in hiring due to that process. So, that will continue to be a contributor in trends that we see throughout the year. Sales tax by major business group is just, I wanted to take a moment and talk about this particular revenue trend, which is a major contributor to our general fund, and also Measure U, and is highly susceptible to economic fluctuations. So, as shown on this graph by major business group, where we're really seeing most of the softening in our sales tax revenues is in autos and transportation, that is a big contributing factor for Santa Maria. It's a pretty significant group of businesses that we have here, and the auto sales have really been declining based on consumer trends and the high inflation rates. So, a few notes here on the staffing trends. Our staffing is 6.1% lower for the quarter than we would have expected. That's, once again, is primarily a contribution from the police department, even though all of the departments do have vacancies, as I've mentioned, the hiring chill and anticipation of proposed potential budget reductions with the second quarter is creating some vacancies. But in the police department, it's really just the natural time and effort that it takes for them to fill their ranks. So, we are still continuing to see significant savings in the police department vacancies, even though they are definitely proactively hiring. We also see some overtime savings in the fire department due to overhire for the Station 6. For contracts and services, we are 7.3% lower, but that's really just due to timing for payment for animal control services within this quarter. And then the transfers out, we are not actually going to implement fully until we see the trends as they develop throughout the year. And then finance will be evaluating that towards the end of the year. For Measure U, once again, similar to the general fund, we are trending on target, there's no surprises, revenues are at 25.7%, and our total expenditures at this point are at Brief look at enterprise funds, very similar trends to last year. Revenues for water and wastewater increased by 5.8% or $983,000 compared, higher compared to last year. Through the first quarter, water and wastewater operational expenses were under budget by 18.7%, that is also due to vacancies and then timing of certain contractual agreements and maintenance projects. Solid waste through the first quarter, revenue succeeded expenditures by $857,000, and operational costs are under budget by 12.1% for the same reasons of vacancies and projects timing. The public transit fare revenues through the first quarter is approximately $124,000, which is $18,000 less than last year. And that's, the difference is attributed to a decrease in ridership. The fare box ratio through September 30 is 12.3%. So, moving on to the budget amendments, this is what we are asking the council to take an action on. I would mention that all of these budget amendments presented with this report are more of accounting true-ups rather than changes in operations and expansion of the services. So, the item number one is an increase in appropriations by $1.2 million in the business equipment fund. Those funds are collected over time based on life and cost of replacement of all the business equipment assets. So, so, general fund and enterprise funds have already made those payments into the fund, and so that money is just sitting there until it's allocated to be able to keep up with the replacement schedules for the assets. So, those funds are available in the business equipment fund, and it's really just a true-up of having done additional analysis on the timing of replacement for the assets, and we are asking for that additional budget to be allocated in the current year. The second item is an increase in appropriations by $48,000 in the business equipment fund, once again, due to a cost increase that was not anticipated for the Dell BMW software. The third item is very similar, increase in appropriations by $360,000, that is also an increase in cost that was not originally appropriated, but those funds are available in the business equipment fund. We are also asking to increase appropriations by $50,000 in the general fund capital project fund for material backhaul refresh project. Once again, that's a cost variation that is required in order to complete that project. Moving on, we are asking for another one item that has to do with personnel, and that is to increase allocations within the landscape district funds in order for them to be able to keep up with the work that's required by the landscape district, and that is funded by the funds specifically collected for that purpose, and it's not part of the general fund allocations. The fifth item is to increase appropriations in the growth mitigation fund by $523,000, and decrease appropriations in the capital improvement fund for the Betray Where US 101 project, that's a reallocation using growth mitigation funds instead of using general fund dollars and gas tax dollars, I believe. So, that is a positive for our capital improvement fund. Number six, reallocate appropriations from the water fund to the wastewater fund, that is a correction, the purchase of this equipment was allocated in incorrect funds, so we are asking to decrease and increase funding as appropriate. And then the last item is increase appropriations by $234,000 in the solid waste disposal fund for post-closure maintenance of the Santa Maria regional landfill, that is based on additional analysis from our utilities department, and is a needed appropriation, and there are funds available in the solid waste fund. That concludes my presentation.
Any, any questions from the council? Thank you, Ms. Bradford. So, the report will be received and filed, but I need a motion on the adoption of a resolution approving the first quarter amendments. I have a, a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilera Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Mayor Portemceto?
Aye.
Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next will be a report by the acting city manager, Mr. Wu.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the December 3rd meeting is canceled, and, and assuming that there's certification of election results, we would expect that there would be a seating of council members for the December 17th meeting. And so, the upcoming items that I'm going to report here are, again, for this December 17th meeting, we'll have a presentation on lights, sights, and holiday nights, a retirement resolution for Lieutenant Woody Vega, a number of different items for consent, but as a public hearing, we'll have a TFR hearing for Centennial Garden Apartments, general plan zone change, and plan development permit for Bella Crest Senior Residential. And we should also have our new city manager here, Dave Rollins. And so, he'll be here first weekend in December, and I'm happy to hand the reins over to Mr. Rollins. And, you know, and I'll acknowledge, I was happy to, you know, take it from Mr. Pasado, who's also did this service for a long time and, and did it very well. So, this concludes the city manager's report.
Thank you. So, let's get the oral reports of council members. Ms. Soto, you want to start?
No reportable items.
Okay, Mrs. Aguilera Hernandez?
I know.
Okay, Mr. Escobedo?
Working on it.
Oh. Mr.? Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a meeting at Presquill Winery with Fighting Back Santa Maria. I attended the car show with the police department. I attended a discussion with, it's a discussion that actually that Maribel was talking about with Supervisor Nelson in La Magnino here at the City Hall. I had a ribbon cutting at Local Copy's, and I enjoyed a tour of Solomon Hill. And that would be it for me, Madam Mayor.
Okay, who wants to go next? Okay. Mr. Escobedo?
Reportable items?
No.
Yeah, I'll skip. Go ahead.
I attended the, on the 27th, the Santa Barbara County Veterans Stand Down. Also, for, I met with, by the way, disclosure, with Supervisor Bob Nelson and also with the applicant for the, Mr. Stolty. And for the veterans, I attended the veterans ceremony here at the Alonado Center.
Thank you.
And also, somebody brought to me, there's an item that eventually, I will be discussing in the future, but the mobile home parks. And, but yeah, that's for future, for future items.
Thank you.
I did attend the Toyota-Honda Holiday, or the Halloween event that they have, and it was a really great event. A lot, you know, half of Santa Maria is probably there, so it was really good that Toyota and Honda do that for the community, and it's safe, trick-or-treating. I also attended the Econ Alliance Board meeting. Thank you.
Okay, so let's see. I don't know how far back we go on this. Attended the California Alliance of Local Electeds on October 13th, the Filipino-American History Month celebration, League of Cities Annual Conference, did the COPS in Cars, Car Show, California Alliance of Electeds again on the 20th of October, Santa Barbara County cleanup and abatement discussion. So if you look at Out of the Riverbed, we can thank San Luis County, Santa Barbara County, flood control sheriffs from both counties, our code compliance, and our park rangers. Looks great. Santa Barbara County Housing and Community Development. On the 25th, attended SB CAG board meeting in the morning, APCD board meeting in the afternoon, community safety forum, and the airport board meeting that night. On the 26th, did the Veterans Stand Down, and Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley fundraiser the 27th with Dia de los Muertos, and the California Alliance of Local Electeds. On the 29th, CHC Skyway Telehealth ribbon cutting, and the League of California Cities Homeless Encampments webinar. Attended the Allen Hancock College Pride Center grand opening, and the Crossroads Basin Flip the Switch ribbon cutting. Attended the Partners in Education Board meeting on November 1st. On the 2nd, the Filipino-American Social Cultural Night. And the November 7th, Santa Barbara Foundation Celebrate Philanthropy, and went to LAFCO. On the 11th, the 23rd, Veterans Day Freedom Monument Ceremony. November 12th, attended the REX and Parks Commission meeting. And November 30th, Supervisor's Academy graduation. On November 14th, did the State of the City, City Open House, and the New Beginnings Supporting the Veterans Families Luncheon. And on the 15th, the REACH Economic Development Roundtable. And, oh, and this last weekend, the Second Year Appreciation Service for the Evangelist Laverne and Deacon Roscoe Holloway at the Harvest Church, which used to be the Johnson Temple. And that is it. Anything else? Yes, Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, you just, senior overlay ordinance, that's an item that eventually would like to see if we can talk in the future.
Okay. So if not, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes tonight's council meeting. Good night.